All right, folks, it looks like we have most people settled into the audience. I'm going to go ahead and call us to order. Thank you very much. Appreciate the enthusiasm in the audience. Before we go ahead and get started with the roll call, I'll ask folks to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We have ourselves a full audience this evening. Looks like folks are coming in still as we speak. So please go ahead and find a seat. There's plenty of them in and around. There are several seats over here. Go ahead and get yourself comfortable. So Ms. Tremble, if we'll go ahead and do a roll call for this evening's meeting, please.
All right. Good evening. Beginning with Anderson. Absent? Basara?
Present.
Campbell?
Here.
Arlino?
Present.
Farmer?
Present.
Jones?
Present.
Jordan?
Present.
Nelson?
Present.
Nugent?
Present.
Savage?
Present.
Cheryl?
Present.
And Vasika?
Present.
Right, and we do have a form.
Thank you, Ms. Tremble. And that brings us to approval of the minutes. We have minutes from May 19th, 2025. Do any council members have changes or questions on those minutes? Nope, not seeing any. Not seeing any online. All right, then those minutes will remain as submitted. Thank you. Next up, we have our committee schedule for this coming Wednesday, which is June 4th. So Ms. Tremble, do we have any changes to our committee schedule for this coming June 4th?
No changes, but it is a full day.
Yes, it is. All right. Great. Full day of committee meetings. And all of those agenda items and materials are located on the City Council website for folks that are interested to hear what is being covered in the various City Council committees this coming Wednesday. Okay, now we'll move on to our special presentations and proclamations. And we do have a couple of neighborhood council updates this evening. The first being the Rose Park Leadership Team update. So whomever is here from the Rose Park Leadership Team, if you'll come on up to the microphone, please introduce yourself by stating your name for the record. And we're eager to hear from you. The Rose Park Leadership Team. Anybody here tonight? All right, not seeing anybody. Let me just make sure nobody's online here. Just give it a second. Okay, not seeing anybody here. Then we'll move on to the next Neighborhood Council update, which is Captain John Mullen Leadership Team. Come on up. There you go.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Sable from the Captain John Mullen Neighborhood Council Leadership Team. Just give a quick update. We had our general meeting this last Thursday evening at 5:30 in 44 Ranch Park. It was a fantastic turnout, the best I've ever seen, about 50 neighbors there. Really good attitudes despite some heavy wind. But we had, on the agenda, we had a Q and A with our City Council members. So we had our Board Two and Ward Six City Council members there to do Q and A with us. All four were there. Thank you all. Really appreciate it. We also had an update from state legislators, a presentation on the Reserve Street Safety Action Plan, and some information from the R. Missoula Code Reform Project, the Post Master Plan, and the Missoula County Office of Emergency Management. So it was a great turnout. We also are working on a neighborhood survey in hopes that understanding our neighborhoods' priorities will help inform our action plan for the next three years. So that's been distributed, and neighbors can respond to the survey online now on the Neighborhood's website until Friday, June 13th. That's all we have. Any questions for me?
Yeah, any questions for Ms. Sable? Any comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any here in the room, but let me just check online first before we let you go. All right. Well, I don't see any questions, but I would love to thank you for your service to the community and for your neighborhood. Thank you for participating with local government. Really appreciate your commitment and your ongoing leadership with the Captain John Mullen Neighborhood Council. We look forward to hearing more.
Thank you.
Take care. Thanks for coming down tonight. All right. That does wrap up our Neighborhood Council updates, unless somebody from the Rose Park Leadership Team has come down during that time period. Just double-check here. Okay, all right. Well, hopefully, we'll hear from folks from the Rose Park Leadership Team another night. So we do have a couple of proclamations this evening. And the first one on our agenda here is for Pride Month. Let me make sure I've got that up and accurate here. All right. So our first proclamation is in honor of Pride Month. That called up on the screen here. Okay, this is a joint Missoula County and City of Missoula proclamation. Whereas Missoula County and the City of Missoula acknowledge the lasting impacts of homophobia and transphobia, which have manifested through acts of physical, mental, emotional, and institutional violence against lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and two-spirit, referred to as LGBTQIA+ and 2S individuals and communities, both in the United States and globally. And whereas Missoula County and the City of Missoula are home to diverse LGBTQIA+ and 2S communities and are committed to supporting the safety, visibility, dignity, and equality of all residents. And whereas on June 28th, 1969, the New York Police Department conducted two raids on the Stonewall Inn, a popular gay bar in Greenwich Village, using anti-LGBTQIA+ and 2S laws, such as masquerade laws, to arrest patrons and workers. And whereas these raids sparked neighborhood resistance, known as the Stonewall Uprising, led by transgender and lesbian activists such as Marsha "Pay It No Mind" Johnson, that's in quotes, Sylvia Rivera, Stormy De La Vry, De La Vry? I bet somebody in the audience knows how to pronounce that better than I did. Ms. Major and many other transgender women of color and the courage of these activists in the face of violence became a rallying call for the LGBTQIA+ and 2S rights movement in the United States. And whereas while significant progress has been made toward policy reform and equitable treatment of LGBTQIA+ and 2S people, there are renewed efforts to discriminate and inflict harm upon these communities, making it essential for local governments to stand in solidarity and take action to support those affected. Now therefore, Missoula County and the City of Missoula do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ and 2S Pride Month and invite all residents to observe this month through community programs, ceremonies, and activities and by visiting missoulapride.com. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Thanks, folks. Now, this was submitted by Missoula County, and I don't believe we have anybody here from Missoula County and the city beyond the mayor here. Nobody from Missoula County. Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, so we have a, our next proclamation is a proclamation for, again, in concert with Missoula County. So Missoula County and the City of Missoula. And this is in regards to the National Gun Violence Awareness Day. So whereas firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens 19 and under in the United States, and in Montana firearms are the second-leading cause of death among children and teens. And it is estimated that there are more than 1,100 suicides on college campuses in the United States every year. And whereas gun violence kills 125 Americans every day, and on average, 70 women are shot and killed by intimate partners each month. And in Montana, an average of 250 people die and 264 are wounded by guns each year. And whereas Montana has ranked among the top five states with the highest suicide rates for the past 40 years, 82% of firearm deaths in Montana are suicides. Suicide is the leading preventable cause of death among youth ages 10 to 14. And LGBTQ plus youth, which 2S isn't in here, but I'll just read, and 2S, youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their straight peers. Montana's American Indians are disproportionately affected by gun violence. And whereas gun violence costs Montana $3 billion each year, of which 30.9 million is paid by taxpayers. Whereas June 2nd, 2025 would have been the 28th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, a teenage girl who was shot and killed in a neighborhood park. And we honor her life and the lives and the lives and lost potential of all Americans stolen by gun violence on this day. And whereas anyone can join the effort to end gun violence by pledging to wear orange on Saturday, June 7th, 2025, to raise awareness, promote responsible gun ownership and safe storage, support efforts to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and keep our children safe. Now therefore, we, the Missoula Board of County Commissioners and the City of Missoula in the state of Montana do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2025 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Thank you. We do have a couple of folks here to speak on this, so come on up. I do believe we have a couple of representatives from the organization here. Come on up.
Thank you. I'm Roxanne Wykel from Ward Four, for the record.
Yeah, go ahead and get close to that microphone when you're speaking, please. Go ahead, Roxanne, one more time.
Okay, I'm Roxanne Wykel, Ward Four, for the record. And first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your service and for joining the rest of Montana and our nation with this proclamation. And we're honored to be here during Pride Month as well. I'm a volunteer with Modest Demand Action for Gunsense. We're a grassroots, nonpartisan organization of mothers and others with nearly 11 million supporters nationally and 3,000 here in Missoula. So we wear orange to demand a future free from gun violence. Orange symbolizes the value of each person's life, and we wear it to honor those killed, wounded, or impacted by gun violence and to call for an end to this crisis. We thank many local businesses and rock and rooties, the Peace Center, and many others in our community for providing information in their stores. You've just heard the sobering statistics about Montana. And think about this. It's hard for me to wrap my head around but that Montana still currently ranks number two in the nation in per capita gun suicides. Something I rarely think about is that gun violence costs Montana $3 billion each year. This includes costs such as medical care costs, emergency transports, police, criminal justice, work loss, and quality of life costs. But obviously, you really can't put a price on lives that are altered or cut short. Behind these statistics are Montanans with heartbreaking stories that affect a wide circle of families and friends in their community. And I just was, I was planning on quoting the last month's news reports, but they were too many and they were too long. You might remember three that really impacted me. Last month, on Mother's Day, the murder-suicide in Kalispell that left four people dead, including two small children. The Helen a teen who, while driving to school, was boxed in and terrified by a man with a gun. And just recently, the death of a three-year-old boy in Libby. So think of the impact on these families, these people, the community forever. As you're well aware, our children now have to cope with lockdowns, which are often very traumatic. Students report that they've texted their parents about their fear or with messages of "I love you." And teachers in Missoula have texted their parents, parents with messages of "I'll protect your children." In closing, we aren't here today to discuss solutions. That would take a while. But let me remind you how important it is for adults to store guns securely at home and in the car. The best practice is to keep all guns unloaded, locked up, and separate from ammunition. This can prevent a person in crisis from having easy access to a firearm, for suicide, for example. Preventing curious children from finding a gun and shooting themselves or someone else unintentionally is very important as well. And it's worth noting that 80% of guns used by youth in school shootings were from a parent or relative's home. So everyone should secure their guns. So to raise awareness and to honor victims and survivors, we invite you to join us at 10:00 a.m. this Saturday as we line the Bear Tracks Bridge. Meet above the Clark Fork Market. We'll provide you with orange placards and wear orange yourself if you can. We hope you will support this effort, and we hope to see you on the bridge. Where orange was started by youth, now I'd like to introduce you to Cora, a student making a difference.
Thank you. Cora, come on up.
Hi, I'm Cora Barnes. I run the Students Demand Action chapter for Missoula. I'm a lifelong Missoulian, and I'm currently attending Hellgate High School. Every day, 125 people are killed from guns in the U.S. That is over twice as many people in this room. This number doesn't even touch the amount of people that are affected, shot, wounded, personally impacted, and live in fear due to gun violence. If you look up the statistic for a different country, for example, the UK, the number is too low to be recorded. Americans and the NRA blame the influence the shooters have, video games, music, media, et cetera. Other countries have these same influences, yet they have exponentially lower shootings and gun violence. The difference here is the laws in place. Their laws protect their people. Our laws are killing U.S. citizens. In honor of today's rally and voting subject, I want to point out some of the LGBTQIA+ sobering statistics. LGBTQIA+ individuals are more than twice as likely to be victims of gun violence than their straight and cisgender peers. As well as LGBTQIA+ youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide. 60% of suicides involve guns. Suicide can oftentimes be prevented when they aren't done in a split second. Finding a key to unlock a gun can trigger their brain to stop. Roughly one child in the U.S. gains access to a loaded firearm and unintentionally shoots themselves or someone else every day. Youth shootings often occur when the shooter has access to a guardian or family member's gun and mass amounts of ammunition. This is why storing guns unloaded and locked up is so important. It's as simple as this. A gun lock. If any of you own a gun or know someone who has a gun, and your gun is not locked up, I'll have these outside for you to grab. We want change. We stand for change. But sadly, too many have been lost and affected before this change could help them. And that is why we wear orange and rally. These people deserve to be recognized and honored. Please help us by rallying on the Bear Tracks Bridge this Saturday, 10:00 to 10:45. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Could I leave these for the City Council?
Absolutely. If you would please leave it with one of the officers, and they'll make sure they hand it out to council members and myself. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Wykel and Ms. Barnes. Appreciate your presentation and for sharing very sobering and insightful information, but also some very commonsensical things that we can do to keep our family members, our friends, and our community safe. And we appreciate you being here today, and thank you very much for continuing to raise awareness and getting rallying in the community this Saturday. Okay, that does wrap up our two proclamations. I see, Councilor Jordan, your hand is up. Do you wish to address either of those?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to speak to the gun violence. You know, being a dual citizen, American and Australian, is a blessing and a curse. And every year, when this day comes up, I talk about how both of my daughters, who are dual citizen, have moved back to Australia for a variety of reasons. And one of them has to do with gun violence. When I moved them here in high school, they were absolutely terrified that they had to do active shooter drills because they've never had to do that in Australia. And I think that our gun laws are traumatizing generations of children. And I don't understand how we can continue to let so many people die based on a lack of really sensible gun laws. I miss my kids, but they're safe in Australia. They don't have to worry about this over there. The other thing, too, I'd like to say is that I wish I could come on Saturday. I really like to be a part of that, but I'm going to be in a bike race and busy that day. And I just appreciate all the work that this group is doing here in Montana because Montana does value gun ownership, and I fully support hunting. But yeah, we need some more sensible gun laws, and I'd love for my kids to feel safe in America and in Australia. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Jordan. All right. Thank you again for coming down for our proclamations and our Neighborhood Council updates. That does wrap up our special presentations and proclamations. I'll queue up our meeting agenda this evening. We do have two public hearings, and we'll go ahead and hear those next. And then we do have an item of new business, of which I know there are several members of the audience that are here for that item. And that is recognizing the pride flag as unofficial flag of the City of Missoula. And then we have our consent agenda. We don't have any regular business this evening. And so we'll go ahead and we'll get started with those public hearings. So our first public hearing this evening, item 5.1, is the Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Amendments. We have Lee Griffin here in the audience, live, to go ahead and give that presentation. And so, Lee, whenever you're ready, take it away.
Thank you. Haven't been here.
There you go. That's better. Yeah, when you get in a little closer, we can hear you real well. Thank you.
Thanks. Again, I do this remotely, so bear with me a moment.
No problem. Take your time.
Presentation. Today, I am bringing the Fourth Quarter FY 2024 Budget Amendments to City Council. And state law allows us to not forward through our presentation. Excuse me. State law allows us to amend the budget throughout the year as long as we notice the hearing and have a public hearing. And I'm here today to ask City Council to adopt or deny the resolution for the Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year 2024 Amendments to the Annual Appropriations. One thing I want to note about this is that we had a delayed audit this year, and we save these Fourth Quarter Budget Amendments until after we've completed the audit. Sometimes we have some little audit adjustments, and that's the reason for that. A lot of these really were just year-end adjustments, true-ups, and so forth. We attach an exhibit to the agenda item that runs through all of the budget amendment items, descriptions, what departments and funds they're affecting, revenue sources, be it fund balance or additional revenue, the expenditure accounts and amounts. And we also include budget carryboards and transfers. Again, a little bit of true-up there that happens at the end. And so this resolution will be the final one for 2024, and it will increase revenues by $23,468,182 and expenditures by $28,994,309. Thank you.
All right. So this is a relatively routine piece of business, and that wraps up the staff presentation. But open it up to council for questions, please. Any questions from council members? Councilor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. If you could, once again, this is a mention in committee, but just outline just generally what creates a condition as to the need for these quarterly budget amendments? And was it that creates that situation or necessity for that, for the benefit of the audience?
Certainly. A lot happens in a year, in a fiscal year. We might identify new grant sources. We might receive a grant. A change might happen to a construction contract. People have heard about change orders and so forth. Oftentimes, we just find an accounting issue that we need to go in and make sure that the accounting is happening in the right code or the right fund. So we will go ahead and bring that forward. We might hire somebody that was not originally considered at the original adoption of the budget. So all of those sort of small moving pieces, we don't get captured on one day in August. And state law again allows us to come bring forward the dynamic changes that happen to a city in a year via budget amendments.
Thank you for that.
Thanks for your question, Councilor Campbell. Councilor Basara?
I don't have a question, but I'm happy to make the recommended motion on Ms. Cheryl's behalf.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Before we go there, which I only see your hand up, do we have any other questions from council before we hear the motion? Or I'm not seeing any, then we're ready for your motion, Councilor Basara. Thank you.
All right. I move that we approve a resolution for the Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year 2024 Amendments to the Annual Appropriations.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So the motion is on the floor. This is a public hearing. This opens the public hearing, and we are ready for public comment on this agenda item. So anybody that is here, I'll start with folks in the room. If you're here to speak on the Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Amendments, we'd love to hear your public comment now. I'm not seeing any in the room. How about online? And I'm not seeing any online either. All righty. Then that wraps up our public comment on this agenda item. And that closes the public hearing. Bring it back to see if there's any additional questions or comments from council members before we take a vote. All right. Not seeing any, then Ms. Tremble will take a roll call vote when you're ready.
All right. Voting on the Fourth Quarter FY 24 Budget Amendment, beginning with Basara.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vasika?
Yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Griffin, for your presentation and all the careful work you do for the City of Missoula's budget. Our next agenda item, public hearing and item 5.2, is the Parking Violation Penalties Ordinance Amendment. This is a staff presentation from Jody Pilgrim with the Missoula Parking Commission. And Jody, we are ready for your presentation whenever you are.
Thank you. I believe I shared my screen.
There it is. You bet. And make sure you just talk close to that microphone. You can adjust it for your height if you need to. There. There you go.
That looks pretty good. Hi, Jody Pilgrim, Parking Services Director of the Missoula Parking Commission. I'm here tonight to request council vote to approve fine increases for parking violations. Parking fines in Missoula were last changed in 2012. These are our current fines. We have three types in ordinance 1054-140. We have meter and overtime violations, which are an escalating structure that starts at $0 and steps toward a maximum fine of $20. The fine is based on the number of violations against that license plate within the last 180 days. Once a license plate gets to the four or more category, their fine for subsequent violations remains $20, regardless of how many fines they receive. Fines reset if a vehicle goes 180 days without violating. So that's about six months. Next, we have improper parking violations, which covers almost all other types of violations, so safety, parking without permits, and parking in violation of posted signage. Fines for these violations are $20 each time, and there's no escalating penalty. And then finally, our highest fine is for disabled parking violations. Those are $100 each, and that amount is set by the state. We are looking at two ordinances tonight because there is also language-stetting fines in the residential parking permit area, which has its own section of code within city ordinance. So I've highlighted up there on the screen the $20 fine that we're talking about. Residential parking permit tickets have always been in line with our improper parking fine rates. And those are currently $20, as outlined in 1054-140. So it is necessary to update the fine listed here with other improper parking fines, just for consistency. Additionally, in meetings with residents of the RPP neighborhood and when presenting the idea of fine increases in their Neighborhood Council meeting, I heard multiple complaints that the fines in the RPP area do not discourage people without permits. I heard multiple complaints that the fines in the RPP area do not discourage people without permits from parking there. The problem we are trying to address with fine increases is that our current rates are not working to discourage repeat parking violations. Fines are meant to be a tool to encourage appropriate parking behaviors and if the fine is not high enough, it does not work to change parking behavior. We started studying our fine rates in two thousand and twenty three as part of our parking study, which resulted in a parking plan that was adopted by the MPC in June of two thousand and twenty four. The study found that enforcement is robust and Missoulians have an existing understanding of parking violations and generally pay attention to rules and regulations. First time violators of the meter parking system or the overtime system are given a waiver, which is a more friendly approach for people unfamiliar with the system who make a mistake. The critical weakness found during the study was that even when graduated, fines are too low to discourage repeat offenders. There are no graduated rates for the most impactful violation types like parking in a bike lane or crosswalk. Somewhat ironically, the low fines are in effect, creating a more punitive environment where violations are more frequent than they would be if fines were set higher and the strategy focused more on penalizing habitual or particularly disruptive violators. The plan proposes as a way to address this weakness that we use higher fines as a tool to shift the enforcement focus to habitual violators and to build a safer, friendlier environment for everyone. I would like to show just a little bit of our ticket data. In two thousand and twenty four, the Missoula Parking Commission issued twelve thousand eighty nine meter violations to a total of eight thousand seven hundred and one unique license plates. Sixty four percent of those violations were zero dollar first meter violations. So the pie chart on the left shows first meter violations in orange. You can see a majority of the meter violations were those first meter zero dollar warnings. In the meter violation graph to the right, we have number of tickets issued to a single plate that's on the bottom. So that ranges from one ticket per plate to more than twelve violations in a single year. As you can see, a majority of the eight thousand seven hundred and one vehicles cited only received one violation. This is eighty two percent of ticketed drivers. You can see that after receiving one violation, eighty two percent of drivers did not go on to receive additional violations. What this shows us is that the warning works. Most users will change their behavior after receiving a warning or single violation. For others, a steeper escalation to the fine may be necessary to change their parking behavior. This also demonstrates that escalation increases will not impact a majority of parkers. It is aimed at that eighteen percent of repeat violators. We see something similar in our RPP violations. In the residential parking permit area, we issued one thousand six hundred and sixty violations to a total of one thousand one hundred and seventy vehicles. Of these one thousand one hundred and seventy vehicles, receiving a single violation was enough to change their behavior. So about seventy eight percent of vehicles cited did not reoffend. And the other twenty two percent of vehicles that did not change their behavior continued to receive that twenty dollar violation each time they parked without a permit. For these twenty two percent of parkers, an escalating fine may be necessary to encourage a change in their behavior. So finally, here are specific recommendations for ten fifty four one forty penalties for parking violations. For meter and overtime violations, we recognize that the warning is working. And we need to maintain the zero dollar first violation to keep a reset period of one hundred and eighty days. We are suggesting that the ticket steps up by ten dollar increments instead of five dollar increments with a max fine of forty dollars. For improper parking violations, we are recommending adding an escalated rate as well as a one year, as well as a one year reset period. The improper parking violation is often a violation that impacts others. Parking in a yellow zone, blocking driveways or alleys, blocking sidewalks or crosswalks in front of fire hydrants or in bus zones and bike lanes. These antisocial parking behaviors are more impactful and should have a less forgiving reset. We are suggesting keeping the initial twenty dollar fine, which is where it is today, but escalating the fine amounts by twenty dollar increments with a max fine of one hundred dollars. These increases are in line with our planned goal to use higher fines to shift the enforcement focus to habitual violators. And they maintain our existing friendly approach for people unfamiliar with the system and those who make an occasional mistake. And here is the specific recommendation for ten twenty two two sixty limitations on parking in a residential parking area. It is in line with the improper park violation recommendation. So we're looking at keeping that initial twenty dollar fine and escalating the fine by twenty dollars for subsequent violations with a max fine of one hundred dollars that will reset if the person goes a year without getting a ticket. These fine increases are not intended to have a heavy impact on a majority of parkers. They are aimed at reducing the number of repeat violators and making meaningful change to parking behavior. The motion language here has been updated from the original language in the referral to account for some feedback that we have received from business owners about the timing of these fine increases. During our public outreach about these fines, timing of the increase was the primary concern that we heard. The last time fines were increased in two thousand and eleven, the increases were set to take effect six months after their approval. This is in line with the precedent that has been set, this January first date. It also addresses some valid concerns from the business community and it helps us to have an opportunity to gently roll out increases and inform those who have maybe not been engaged so far. That's the end of my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pilgrim. And that wraps up the staff presentation. Are there any questions from council for Ms. Pilgrim tonight? Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am mayor. Thank you for your presentation. What's the expectation of this would do Parking Commission in terms of revenue generation once this does go into effect over a twelve month calendar period of time?
Thank you for asking that. So in our parking plan, our consultants stated that there would be a two percent decrease for every ten percent increase in fine. So I did not do the exact math on that, but what we project is that our revenues would actually decrease, our fine revenues would actually decrease because more people would avoid doing the behaviors that would get them those higher fines. We would see more compliance with the parking rules and regulations. And so there could be an increase in our parking meter revenue. But we do not expect this to increase our parking fine revenue.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you for your question. Any other questions? All right. Not seeing any other questions then. This is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment on this agenda before, after we hear the motion. So on this item. We're in public works. Yeah, Counselor Becerra, thank you.
Me. All right. I move that we approve an ordinance amending section ten fifty four one four zero penalties parking violation in section ten point twenty two point two six zero limitations on parking and residential parking permit only area to go into effect January first, two thousand and twenty six.
All right. Thank you very much. Motion is on the floor. This opens our public hearing. Anybody that wishes to make public comment on this agenda item is welcome to come up to the microphone. I'll start with folks in the room and then we'll go ahead and move to folks online. Is there anybody in the room that wishes to make public comment? Hey there, come on up.
Scott Sproul, Ward one. I'm actually here to support the increases. Some of you know that the parking consultants originally recommended the twenty dollar parking ticket go to a hundred and sixty dollars. That kind of raised my eyebrows. And, and now the maximum ticket will be forty dollars. But I also want to thank the Parking Commission, especially Jody, for working with me and others and being extremely transparent and listening and hearing about what's happening with tariffs. And then maybe we can delay this happening until the first of next year. So you got a good employee there with Jody and she's worked with me a lot and I, I just really appreciate everything Jody and the Parking Commission have done.
Thank you very much for your thoughtful comments, Mr. Sproul. Appreciate it. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment on this agenda item? Come on up, please.
Hi, do you need to know my name?
We do ask that people say their name for the record, please.
Okay. For the record, my name is Jay Clara Flores officially. So I was not coming here because of this, but I think that it's worth noting that I feel it should be considered how this would impact people that are on the lowest end of our income brackets and if there's possibly a way for people to get a, a grant or a voucher or something for if they are individuals that are below the poverty line that are having to work downtown or in those areas that would just be struggling to pay the eight dollars a day, the ten dollars a day if, if they have some need there. Obviously, I didn't come planned for this, but, but I just feel like it would make sense because sometimes we genuinely can't afford parking and there might be a reason that we're urgently needing to be in the area. So that could just be, be thought about somehow. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. Anybody else for public comment on this agenda item? Sure, come on up, please.
For the record, my name is Zachary Stone. I just saw this here today, so I don't know if my eyes were correct. I saw the first violation being increased to five hundred dollars in the non-residential areas. I believe a increase of a fine of a order, orders of magnitude greater would put a disproportionate impact on our most vulnerable members of our community. Simply being able to pay for a ticket that is approximately one twentieth or one fortieth of their annual income, I think is fairly unreasonable. As well as I believe a net negative for income as a increase of court activity around these tickets would probably lead to an increase of fees legally and to the state. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Any other members of the public wishing to make public comment on this agenda item?
Robert Dunlop, twenty three sixteen West Cap. Just a reminder to everyone, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. You can avoid a parking ticket by riding mountain lines, riding your bike or walking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Public service announcement? Any other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening? All right. Not seeing anybody in the room. How about online? I've got a hand raised here. All right. Chester Sights? Please go ahead and unmute on your side.
God's hand. I assume that a sliding fee scale is already implemented. So for those that are, it's most equitable solution with those that are below a certain poverty line to be paying less and those that would love to pay more up until et cetera. And that's going to be all.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sights, are you complete? Okay, you are done with your comment there. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comment this evening. Great. All right. Anybody else wish to make public comment this evening? Okay. Not seeing any additional questions. Or excuse me, comment from the public? We'll go ahead and bring it back to city council members, see if there's any comments or additional questions from council. Counselor Carlino?
Thanks. Yeah, I was wondering if Jody could just clarify the two concerns that we had from the audience about how much it would, like the maximum like fine would be and then I know that we're keeping still the first one, like free, like you've been forgiven ticket for people. And then I was wondering if you could answer the other question just about like, you know, forgiveness for people that are like low income and things. I know I've seen that firsthand, like before the Parking Commission, that they've got it reduced, but if you could just help clarify some of those questions that people had?
Sure. So the max fine for the meter violations is going from twenty dollars to forty dollars. And the max fine for the improper parking violation, so those safety violations is going to go from, it starts at twenty dollars. Still, the first is twenty dollars. The second would be forty dollars. So if you reoffend, it's forty. If you do it again, it's sixty, then eighty, and then one hundred. The maximum fine would be one hundred dollars. For the sliding fee scale, we do have, we have low cost parking options for employees and residents of downtown, people who have to come into downtown. So it doesn't cost you eight dollars a day, like parking in the garage or eighteen fifty a day, like it does if you park on the street. It costs two dollars a day. We also have a discount parking lot, our west front lot, which is fifty cents an hour for people who need to stop short term in the downtown. And then our garage is the first hour is free. So the first hour of parking is free in the garage. It's a dollar an hour after that. So those, those kinds of quick stops or urgent stops that people need to make can be made for free if they park in the parking garage.
Did that answer your questions? All right, you bet. Maybe you'll just, maybe just stay right there in case other council members have any questions. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am mayor. No question, just a comment.
Okay.
Time for comments, so.
Yeah, absolutely. You bet, you bet.
Thank you. Can appreciate your conversation here and your information. I, however, am going to be against this ordinance today. As I said in committee, I, I do have concerns with the impact it has on downtown business community. I think, you know, a lot of them, you know, are operating, you know, with minimal profit margins or have a hard time, again, folks coming into business because of parking. Employees, trying to get employees in the local businesses and work in local businesses because of parking situations. I appreciate what you're saying about two dollars a day, but you know, that adds up if you're making, say fifteen dollars an hour. I mean, that's, you know, a couple hours a month that goes to the Parking Commission to be able to go there and do your job. So hence it makes it more difficult to work downtown than would be, say, in other parts of town. So that's a concern. And I, I don't think the economic condition is such yet that, you know, even with the January first of twenty six, you know, delay on this that you know, the business community is in a place, you know, with the tariff situation and, you know, what else might be going on at the national economic level that it's prudent to, you know, place a pending burden upon our businesses downtown at this point. So for the hearing now, I'll be against this.
Counselor Jones?
Sure, quick question and then a comment. Jody, the disabled parking spots, although you enforce that, that's not included in this rate. That's, that's state law. That's out of your purview.
That's correct. Yeah, we can't change that rate. Yep. That'll be a hundred, they're one hundred dollars each.
Okay. And I just briefly wanted to comment, thank you for all of your work on this. It's a lot of work to reinvent the wheel periodically, but that's what we need to do to keep, keep it turning forward. So I appreciate that and I appreciate it here directly from the business community. Mr. Sproul is often weighing in on these items and I appreciate his comments and coming down tonight and you working with them. And I think it's a real common sense approach at this point. So thanks for doing all of that.
All right. Thank you both for your comments. And do we have any other council comments before we take a vote? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you, Ms. Pilgrim. Okay, then Ms. Trimble, we're ready for a roll call vote, please. All right. Voting on item five point two, parking violation penalties ordinance amendment. And I have updated it to state that it will go into effect on January first, two thousand and twenty six. Beginning with Campbell?
No.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vaseka?
No.
And Becerra?
Yes.
All right, that's nine in favor, two opposed, and that does pass. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the public hearing and your presentation this evening, Ms. Pilgrim. We'll now go ahead, that does wrap up our public hearings. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is new business. And under new move on to our next agenda item, which is new business. And under new business six point one, the item is recognizing the pride flag as an official flag of the city of Missoula. And we have Councilwoman Jennifer Savage to provide the overview and kick off this agenda item, please.
Great, thank you very much. I have something that I'm just going to read. So last week, my email inbox filled with messages from concerned parents, students, and community members about pride flags having been removed from Missoula's classrooms. In the wake of House Bill eight nineteen that Governor Gianforte signed on May thirteenth, which regulates the types of flags that may be flown in public buildings in Montana, Missoulaans were concerned and urged all of us to act quickly. Tonight, I bring you a resolution to make the pride flag an official flag for the city of Missoula. I heard our community when they asked for quick action, and I bring this resolution to you for your consideration as a city councillor, as someone who is often in public school classrooms, and as the mother of a queer kid. My sense of urgency comes from the fact that we are in the second day of Pride Month, that if we pass this resolution tonight, school kids may be able to go home for the summer under the banner of a rainbow flag. But mostly because of, because as the mother of a queer kid, the issue of queer visibility is always urgent for me. The pride flag symbolizes inclusion. When a public school teacher flies it in his or her classroom, it says to the student that has, that has already come out that they are welcome. It symbolizes to the student who may just be coming to understand their sexual or gender identity that that classroom is a safe space. It also symbolizes to other students that hate won't be tolerated there. And when the pride flag disappears from classrooms with the stroke of a pen, students, teachers, and allies feel a little less seen. Inclusion is important. Queer visibility is life-saving, and out loud allyship is a requirement for those of us that sit at the tables of power. When I see the pride flag, I breathe a little sigh of relief, and I think my kid is safe here. My kid, who when she was three, wore camo cargo pants and light-up Spider-Man shoes. My kid, who was the prince, not the princess, in every game of make-believe. My kid, who we called gender non-conforming because those were the words we had fifteen years ago, before we had they/them pronouns. My kid, who, like Abby Wambach once described herself in her book Wolf Pack, was always the wolf and never Little Red Riding Hood. My kid is all grown now. She is fierce and kind. She runs her own business, and she's worked tirelessly to earn a Division One hockey scholarship for the fall. She grew up with loving parents in this supportive community. While she ran and climbed through a blissful childhood, I was at times, despite the open support we received from family and friends, fearful for her safety. It's probably a special kind of terror only mothers can muster. But when I heard we'd have to ask teachers to remove pride flags from their classrooms last week, I smelt a, felt a small pang of that primal fear. So as the emails, texts, and calls rolled in last week, many of my fellow city councillors and I got to work. We researched similar actions in places like Boise and Salt Lake City. We passed around ideas and came up with this resolution. I'd like to thank Counselor Nugent, Counselor Jones, and Counselor Cheryl for reading drafts and for their immediate support. I appreciate your collaboration and also for understanding why I needed to and encouraging me to carry this resolution on my own. If we pass this resolution tonight, we'll take again, take a stand against a bill that was only meant to silence marginalized groups. We'll say we're not going back to the days before Stonewall. We'll say that every kid is safe here. And to those kids just trying to be exactly who they are, we'll say we see you. We really see you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Savage. Thank you. Okay, folks, I just want to remind us a little bit about the etiquette in city council, partly because I, I recognize and appreciate your enthusiasm, and I have that too. However, this is a place that we welcome all sorts of different perspectives. Earlier, when we had our proclamations, that was celebrating, proclaiming some things. When we go into public comment, for example, I would ask that nobody make comments, no cheering, no sniding, no talking under your breath and applauding. I recognize that that's a bummer, that you want to be able to celebrate moments like this. And that was a wonderful introduction and, and, and presentation, Counselor Savage. Thank you. But I do want to make sure that we are creating a space in these council chambers for everybody to be able to share their opinion. So thank you very much for respecting that. I appreciate that very much. Okay, so with that, then we do have the, the presentation on the floor. There's really not a, a resolution to read procedure. You do have a resolution drafted. That is part of the city council agenda this evening. And so with that, we've basically heard our presentation. And before we hear the motion, we'll bring it to questions from council members. So any questions from council members this evening on this agenda item? Not seeing any questions from folks? Yes, Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. This might be a question for Ryan with the sponsor. I'm not sure. I'm just curious whether or not just the mayor alone has authority to make a change to the municipal flag as it is, or is it something that has to go through this legislative process?
I, I would argue, I think, under the city's charter, former government, that city council has the sole authority to make these sort of citywide policy decisions. The mayor is charged with enforcing the policies and legislative actions adopted by city council, but isn't given that sort of broad policy-setting authority under the charter.
One other for me?
Yes, please.
Do we know the sponsor, or anybody with the city staff know how often, I guess prior to passage of this bill, eight nineteen, how often or under what occasions has the city flown the pride flag at city hall?
Are you directing that to Mr. Sudbury?
Mr. Sudbury, Mr. Bickle, or I, I guess maybe a better way to phrase it, are there occasions that the city will or have in the past, prior to passage of this bill, fly the pride flag at city hall?
Mr. Bickle?
Dale Bickle, Chief Administrative Officer. I'm not aware that the city has taken a position relative to flying the pride flag at city hall. What we'd be looking forward to is working with council as you consider this policy decision and how we'd want to consider doing that in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Basika, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. I was just curious if the sponsor or I guess any, any of my colleagues know, has the city of Missoula, I guess, done this for a different flag? Because reading the bill, it has a lot of options for government entities and other things like that. So I was just wondering if there is an instance that doesn't include the pride flag where the city of Missoula has adopted it as an official flag, if that question made sense.
Mr. Sudbury?
We looked into this, Ryan Sudbury, City Attorney. We did look into this. There's nothing in our official records that show that we've taken official action to adopt an official flag for the city of Missoula. The city's logo stands in as kind of an official flag, but, but there's been no formal action taken. And to my knowledge, we haven't flown a flag at city hall, the pride flag, or otherwise it wasn't the state or the PW flag or the national flags. But I, we don't have any clear records on that.
Okay, thank you. I'm all finished.
You bet. Thank you, Counselor Basika. Any other questions from council this evening? Counselor Campbell, sure, you bet.
Thank you once again, Madam Mayor. I guess this is for the sponsor. Have you looked or has it been discussed with school district at all as far as the school district flag, if one exists? Because I read the bill and it appears there's an exclusion, you know, as there is for government flags, also for school district flags. Is there consideration or has there been consideration given to address that through the school board to take action for public schools and going down that avenue?
I think that's a great question, Mr. Campbell. We actually have two school board, school board trustees in the audience, three, excuse me. Would one of you want to answer that question on behalf of the school board?
Wearing my other hat, not my city of Missoula hat. So we, we looked into this as well. And so, yes, we could adopt it as a district, but this is really a community-wide effort and something for you guys to think about for our entire community. But it has been talked about. We could. But it really would be best if it came from an entire city, community-wide endeavor.
You bet, absolutely. Counselor Basika, I see your hand is, is raised. Do you have an additional question?
Yes, thank you for indulging me. In reading the bill, I just want to make sure that I'm reading it correctly. It's, it's saying that teachers and students are still allowed to wear like pins or other thing, things on their personal clothing. Is that correct? Or is that disallowed as well?
Mr. Sudbury, do you take that?
Yeah, again, Ryan Sudbury, City Attorney. I share the same reading of the bill. It clearly provides, well, let me read from the bill, actually, instead of trying to summarize it. The, the language of the bill, this is HB eight nineteen, states clearly that nothing in the bill may be construed to limit the private speech of individuals, and nothing in this bill may be interpreted to restrict expressions of personal belief outside of official government displays. And it doesn't go so far as to define official government displays. But in my mind, you know, taking the common meaning of that would be flag poles, the entrances to buildings and things like that. But it wouldn't go so far as to govern what people wear on their shirts or pins or lapels. I, I think you could interpret that to include, you know, employee workspaces, which with respect to the school classroom may include the classroom. I mean, I don't give legal advice to the schools, but if, if the city administration came and said that there were people flying pride flags at employee workstations within city hall, I would say the bill appears to allow for that. It's a person's desk, their family photos, pictures of their dog, or, or pride flags hanging from the walls. It's not an official government display. That's sort of a, a personal expression. And I think that that would be fine in that regard. So, yeah.
That really helps. I, I should be done now. Thank you.
No worries. No worries. Thank you, Counselor Basika. Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I just wanted to add something. When Ms. Savage was drafting this and after a conversation with Mr. Sudbury, we specifically added that whereas the city of Missoula recognizes a distinction between official government displays, such as those on flag poles or within council chambers, in personal areas or spaces that are clearly decorated by individual employees, which are not and shall not be construed as official government displays, so that the city of Missoula is recognizing that. So our employees know that they are free to express themselves in their spaces, and it's safe from this clear overreach from the state legislature. So we intentionally did that to, to kind of codify that in our own resolution. And while I, I agree with what Mr. Sudbury is saying, I recognize that each district has to interpret these things their own way. And the best way to create clarity is for the city of Missoula to recognize this as an official flag, because that is clearly called for in, in this state law. So.
Okay. Thank you very much for providing that clarity in regards to the resolution and the statute. Counselor Nugent? Any other questions from council before we hear the motion? Yes, Counselor Becerra?
Thank you. In reading the bill, it's, it's not completely clear whether i, if we were to adopt this as an official flag, if that is the only flag that we can have. And I think this opens an opportunity for other communities and other flags to potentially come before us, you know, those that align with our community values. And so I just wanted to ask that question, that if we were to adopt this flag and later on, you know, adopt a different one, what is the process for that? That was for right.
Mr. Sudbury?
Well, as I've expressed to numbers, city council members privately before the meeting, reading the bill, it, the way I read the bill is that it states that the city can fly the official flag of the city. And I think the common parlance, the common understanding of that meaning is there's one flag. There's the official flag of the United States, there's the official flag of the state of Montana. The official flag would be the, the flag that represents the city of Missoula as adopted by the city council through resolution. So if you wanted to change the official flag, you, city council would be free to do so. They could adopt a resolution repealing the prior resolution and adopting a new official flag. But the way I interpret the bill, and, and that doesn't mean I'm correct, it's just the way that I read it, is that you have one official flag, not a multitude of official flags, such that we could adopt a, a host of official flags of the city of Missoula. So to the extent the city council decides that it wants to adopt the pride flag as the official flag of the city of Missoula, the way I read the bill, that's fine. If two or three more groups come to the next city council meeting or meet with you privately and want the city to adopt additional flags, I do, the way I read the bill, would think that that would create a problem in that it, it would run afoul, it would appear to run afoul of the language of the bill. It allows us, it carve that as exemption for the city or for other government entities to fly the official flag of the city of Missoula. So I guess to answer your question in short would be, you adopt an official, one way to adopt the official flag of the city of Missoula is to do so by resolution. And if you were to adopt a new official flag in the city of Missoula, it would be my opinion that you would need to repeal the old official flag to adopt the new.
Okay. Counselor Nugent?
Thanks, Mayor Davis. This is written specifically to say "and," mostly because while I respect Mr. Sudbury, I don't completely share that interpretation of legislation. I should clarify, I've never gone to law school, though. But the reason that, that when we were sitting down and talking about it, we looked at that way is nowhere else that we could find in state statute does it talk about a municipality's ability to adopt a flag or put specifications or anything of that nature on there. And it also lists a lot of entities that the legislature has no control over, such as military flags, of which there are many, tribal governments of which the legislature has no control over and things like that. So we interpreted the "the" as just more of acknowledging that if it's an official flag, it's been adopted by that entity, it would fall into "the," but it's not limiting it to one or more. And so I just think that for the purposes of this resolution, we're acknowledging that this is a flag recognized by the city of Missoula, but it's not the flag.
There. Thank you for providing that additional context. Any additional questions from council? Okay, I'm not seeing any additional questions. So with that, then I will look to Counselor Savage to make the motion, please.
I move that we adopt a resolution of the city of, of the Missoula council recognizing the pride flag as an official flag of the city of Missoula.
Okay, so the motion is on the floor. That means that we will now offer the opportunity for public comment on this agenda item. Public comments are limited to three minutes apiece. I will help you keep time up here. There's a little colored monitor that helps you keep time. How many folks intend to make public comment this evening? If you could raise your hand. Okay, great. And when you do so, if you'll say your name for the record, that would be very helpful. And so members of the public wishing to make comment, come on up now. And again, this is on the agenda item of recognizing the pride flag as an official flag of the city of Missoula.
If you want some expert help, Big K Montana would send you to Jackie Patskupski, the mayor of Salt Lake City, back in the day, where they actually put up a pride flag in front of city hall on Pride Month. Let's change it that it's going to be the official flag of the month for the city of Missoula, not the entire year, because there's other infrastructures that would love to have their flag recognized for their organization for the month throughout this year. Yes, Salt Lake City had a humongous ceremony on Pride Month of raising the pride flag with its own flag pole in front of their city hall. And I was actually there for the ceremony of it, if you really want. And back in two thousand and eight, when I drove commercial truck locally, I went to the Walmart Distribution Center, and I seen that gay flag emblem on the gelf. I didn't know Salt Lake City had one of the largest gay populations in the west. of the Rockies in Mormonville.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Montana. All right, next public comment, come on up.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stacy Hunt, and I've been a Missoula resident and small business owner for more than 17 years now. I want to focus my comments specifically tonight on our LGBTQIA2+ youth, our queer youth, not because others aren't affected, because obviously they are, but because this group faces especially urgent challenges. I have queer youth in my own family and immediate community, and 100% of my volunteer work is dedicated to creating safe and joyful spaces where those kids can thrive. While what I'm about to say applies broadly, my lens is personal and specific. Because these young people are not statistics to me. They're extraordinary, they're loved, and they deserve better. Montana, and we heard from the gun violence folks, sorry, I'm not sure what else to, similar. But Montana has the highest suicide rate in the nation. Our young people are three times more likely to die by suicide than youth in any other state. For queer youth, the risk is even greater. They're more than four times as likely than their peers to attempt suicide. And that's not because of who they are, but because of how they're treated, bullied, erased, marginalized, and stigmatized. According to the Trevor Project, 90% of queer youth say that their mental health has been harmed by recent political attacks. Go figure. Nearly half were bullied last year, and those who were had significantly higher suicide attempt rates. But we know what makes a difference. Queer youth who live in very accepting communities attempt suicide at less than half the rate of those in unaccepting ones, and that's why symbols of inclusion matter. The pride flag is not political. It's a symbol of belonging. It doesn't promote a party or a platform. It reflects the truth. The queer people live here, work here, we raise families here, and we deserve to be safe and visible in Missoula. Incorporating pride colors into, or however we choose to do it, into Missoula's city flag is an advocacy, it's civic representation. It's a message to every person, and specifically to every young person. You're seen, you're valued, and you're welcome in Missoula. We heard cities like Salt Lake and Boise have taken the same step, honoring diversity while respecting state law, and Missoula can too. A city flag should reflect who we are. Who are we? This isn't just about symbolism. Major medical and educational organizations agree that inclusion supports mental health and saves lives. It's not controversial, it's compassionate. I'll leave you with this. I've taught my kids that inaction is action. If we choose not to act now, if we remain neutral in the face of clear and obvious harm, we're still making a choice. By failing to visibly include our queer community and our civic identity, we're choosing silence. And in Montana and everywhere, silence costs lives. The action of visible inclusion harms no one. Inaction, on the other hand, has a cost that we can't afford. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Come on up.
Hello, everybody. Chloe Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for the pride flag resolution, which recognizes the pride flag as the official city flag of Missoula. As a proud resident and advocate for inclusivity, I believe this resolution sends a powerful message that our city values and celebrates its LGBTQIA2+ community. The pride flag is more than just a symbol. It represents resilience, acceptance, and ongoing part for equality. By formally adopting it as the official flag of the City of Missoula, it reaffirms its commitment to being a welcoming place for all, in line with the spirit of Montana's laws and our shared values of diversity. I also urge the council to consider a small but meaningful addition to further cement the flag's legitimacy, incorporating the Missoula City Seal into the design when displaying on municipal property. This would strengthen its status as an official city flag, aligning it with other government-endored symbols, protect against future challenges by clearly tying it to the city's authority, not just political or cultural expression, honor both identity and place, blending the pride flag's universal meaning with Missoula's unique civil pride. Why this matters, our city, our schools, and government buildings should reflect the diversity of our community. Pride flag with the city seal isn't just a symbol. It's a statement that Missoula stands with its queer community, youth, families, and neighbors. State law may aim for neutrality, but neutrality that erases marginalized voices isn't neutral at all. For the queer community, students, families, and neighbors, this isn't just about a rainbow. It's about safety. When the pride flag hangs in schools or hallway or a public building, it sends a clear message to your welcome here. You will be protected here. Removing that symbol doesn't create neutrality, it creates isolation. I'd like to thank you all for your leadership in advancing this resolution. I hope you'll consider my suggestion as a way to ensure the pride flags have during recognition and to showcase Missoula as a model of inclusivity and to Montana and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. All right. One moment. No problem.
Okay. Hi again. Clara Flores. I support Missoula adopting the pride flag as our city flag because as a queer and non-binary person in Montana, visible support is essential in the face of mounting threats like Project 2025, which seeks to criminalize us. When I'm just walking down the street holding hands with my girlfriend, I'm not being pornographic as some of the people impacting our federal law are trying to say I am. Sorry, one second. Making the pride flag official would send a clear message that our city stands for safety, dignity, and equity for all, which would help to protect us from discrimination and affirm that Missoula will not turn its back on the LGBTQIA2+ community. I lost words, but that's what I've got. Thank you.
That was great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next public comment, come on up.
Walina Old Person Ward 4. Okay, nitzdu kasten walina old person, untuk tu amaskapi pikani. Missoula County Public Schools Board of Trustees. I am the Chair for Missoula County Public Schools, School District 1 here in Missoula, Montana, and I thank you for allowing me time to speak to you all tonight. MCPS is a welcoming place for all students. Public education is for all students. And one of the things we really need to do is show our students are welcomed within their schools. And having to email teachers and buildings to let them know to take down pride flags is a dishonor to those students. We really need to honor our students and let them know that they are welcomed in their schools, in their classroom. And it is a way for us to show inclusivity. And so I really urge you to pass this resolution. And I, as someone who's been othered, I know how marginalized things can go. And I really just urge you all to pass this resolution. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Old Person. Thanks for coming down this evening. Next public comment, come on up.
Hello, everybody. Denise Chuno, Missoula resident, former state superintendent of public instruction, former Seattle Public School superintendent, former educator, a lot of formers. But I'm just here, I was moved by the action on the bridge and also all the people in this room to come support this resolution. And I'm also the co-chair of the Jedi Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Roadmap. And so here, speaking as that as well, to just make sure that I'm thanking you for working on issues like this that help everybody feel like they belong in this community. It's why I'm a member here. I feel like I'm seen, and I want everybody to feel seen, especially our youth in our schools. And so thank you so much for continuing to make Missoula a great place to live and be. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Chuno. Thanks for coming down. All right, next public comment, come on up.
Thank you all. I'm Representative Melody Cunningham, and this bill was heard before our Judiciary Committee in the House session. We argued vociferously that the pride flag was certainly a historical flag and that it was very important. And I bet 99% of Americans have heard of the pride flag as a historical flag and very few of the Gadsden flag, which is included in this bill and allowed. I also wanted to clarify why I hope that every city council member will vote for this, because in reading the bill, I think it is very, it really limits where it can be displayed. So in Section 3, of this is the enrolled bill, so it's the finalized bill, no flag or banner may be displayed in or on government property, including but not limited to state buildings and grounds, public schools, and other government-owned facilities, other than the following flags and banners. And then it lists the ones that are allowed. So I think it deliberately causes removal of pride flags from school classrooms. And I think that's critically important to our kids' safety. You've heard the statistics about suicides. I'm a representative now, a former school teacher, and a pediatrician. And with all of those hats on, I implore everyone to vote for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Cunningham. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Aiden Daler. I am a city employee, but I'm just speaking for myself. I'm a trans-Montanian who recently moved back to Montana. I left years ago out of fear of what the state was becoming. I saw the way the state legislature attacked LGBTQ people, and I was worried that this wasn't my home anymore. I really urge the council to pass this resolution. I've worked with youth for over 10 years, and the difference between a supportive person, supportive family, a supportive community is life or death for a youth. It's life or death for everyone in our community. These things can't be taken lightly, even if it feels like just a symbol or a flag. I didn't get to grow up in a place where things like queer people were talked about, where pride flags were allowed. And a lot of my, I almost was not here at this point in my life. So I want you to consider how many lives you can save through simple actions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments this evening, Aiden. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. I'm Grace Decker, Ward 1. And I'm mostly here just to say thank you. Considering this resolution tonight, considering taking this action at this time, makes me feel proud of this community in a way that has made this the place that I've chosen to call home for so many years. This resolution will ensure that this is a community that walks its talk. And these times that we're living in ask all of us to be a little braver, a little bolder, and take the actions that we can, use the platforms that we have to protect the most vulnerable in our communities. That's this community that I love. I'm really, really grateful to the sponsor for bringing this forward and to everyone who's already spoken in favor of it. And I really urge all of you to vote for it. This is the Missoula that we all want to call home.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. All right, next public comment, come on up.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Vassler. I'm here as a private community member, but I also am a teacher in town. I'm not prepared to speak because I didn't intend to, so I apologize. I'm not very good at it. But if you read the bill, it's very clear that our kids are being targeted. Like Representative Cunningham clarified, these flags are not allowed on our classroom walls, and that includes digital information. So the small flags, stickers that we were given, about the size of my phone, smaller, that said, they were pride flag stickers that said, "All students deserve a safe and welcoming place to learn." I was told that those had to come down. So I walked in on Friday morning, and I took it down. And I'm having a hard time forgiving myself for that, because our kids, please hear me when I tell you that they notice. They see them, they look for them, they know who has them, and they will notice when they come down. I'm sure they already have. And they also will notice how their community responds when they're targeted. And I'm asking you to help us protect them, to help us put those stickers back up, and to understand the deeper meaning behind this and what it actually means for children and families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. All right, next public comment. I'm a little short. You can adjust that. There you go.
Thank you. You bet. My name is Sophie Trudgeon. I'm here on behalf of Catalyst Montana, a local nonprofit in town. And we strongly support this resolution to recognize the pride flag as an official city flag for all the reasons that everybody so eloquently said tonight. I also wasn't planning on speaking today, so I'd just like to say thank you to the city council for considering this. And thank you to everyone that took time out of their day to share their personal stories and their personal experiences in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Jane Doherty. I am a second-grade teacher here, but I am speaking on behalf of myself. Never been prouder to say that than Missoula. The action was quick. It was devastating to hear that colleagues were being told to take their pride flags down. And I was feeling a moment of serious despair at how quickly we all organized and how respectfully and how powerful it is, because we do a second-grade unit on changemakers, and we learn about people who break unjust laws. And I'm very happy I don't have to break an unjust law. And then I did briefly take down my little pride flag that's been hanging in the back of my classroom above my desk. I have two children in my classroom whose parents are gay. And maybe nobody else in the class noticed, but I know those kids noticed the flag went down. And I'm glad I don't have to break any laws. I'm glad that we're, I'm really confident we're going to pass this. And I want to thank all of you and my beloved community. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. Meg Witcher. I'm here as a school board trustee. I'm here as a City of Missoula employee. I'm here as a mother, as a community member. I've given my blood, sweat, tears, joy, stoke the last 13 years in this community with our kids and families. And you guys in this council and the city have entrusted me to care for what I consider our most valuable thing in the entire world. We've talked a lot about schools. We know the pride flag has to come down. Y'all, essentially, we run a small school every day. I have 400 kids a day in summer camp, 300 kids a day in after-school programs, not even counting the sports. I just onboarded 150 employees ages 14 and up to work these programs. This is our community, and this is our chance. I've never been more excited. It's like been my dream when MCPS and the city would finally start really working together. And I'm overjoyed that we have the opportunity to save this for our children, for our families. It's not just about the kids. It's about people walking into our workplace, into base camp, and being able to have a pride flag there and know that this is a place that my family, I am welcome to be there. It's not just about the school. And I just really, really am grateful for all the work that you guys do every single solitary day.
Thanks, Ms. Witcher. Back at you. Thank you. All right. Yeah, absolutely. You bet. You bet. You bet, yeah. No reason to cringe on your neck, yeah.
Hello, my name is Mael Duell Lebien, and I myself am a LGBTQ+ person. And I have so many friends who are also a part of that community. I actually have a friend who had to move because they did not feel safe in Missoula. They actually moved all the way to Portland, Oregon, because they didn't feel safe. And I don't think that anyone should ever have to experience that. And really, it would just, it could save and help so many people if the LGBTQ+ flag was put somewhere to represent the community. And it would just be so amazing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening.
Hi, my name is Solène Duell Lebien, D-U-W-E-L-L hyphen L-E space B-I-H-A-N.
Thank you for that.
It's the same for him. Yeah, it's bad, but, sorry, I have to follow that. I am a 15-year-old high school student. I go to Hellgate High School. I have friends who aren't safe at home to be themselves. And knowing someone at school or in businesses or somewhere around town can support you and be there for you, it's life-changing. And so I ask every one of you, please, support this, because it can save so many people. And it's so important for us to remain an accepting and kind community to those who need it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. Hi.
Hi, I'm Rosalind Haley. And first of all, I just want to say, who doesn't love Missoula? I am so happy to live here in this state right now. But what I want to point out is that we take these ideas, and it's like an us or them. And I heard it from some different people in the council, a little bit of like an us or them kind of thing. And it's not an us or them. It's an all-of-us thing. And so when we bring every- And so when we bring everybody and we make everybody included and feel like they belong in our community, our community is stronger and is better. And that's what I want for us. And that's why I fully support this. And I think that this is a great step for Missoula to move forward and to tell the world and the state of Montana that we're inclusive and we belong here. People belong here, and we care. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comments. Hi, come on up.
I'm Petra Yacharma. And I am a fourth-grade teacher and also a mother of children here in the city, one who has graduated from our school district and two that are currently in it. I'm speaking today because I am very disheartened by the bills that are currently going through our legislature in the... here in our own home state, particularly those that are targeting our LGBTQIA+ and S2 individuals, including this one banning flags flying in our governmental buildings. I, too, have several students in my classroom this year who are either children of parents from this community or identify as a member of this community as well. They have seen my flag up in my classroom all year. And last Friday, they had to walk in and notice it was gone. And I just can't fathom what that felt like to them, to walk into their class that's supposed to be warm and accepting and notice that that symbol was now removed and the message that sends to our students that we don't support them. And it's very heartbreaking. Because of this, I think it's really important that we do use this route to adopt the flag as an official city flag. Other cities have done it across the country. And it's only natural for Missoula to do this for Montana. It's not only important for our community, but it's important for our whole state. As the bill states, all flags that are official flags of the state of Montana or any county, municipality, special district, or other public subdivision within the state will be allowed to be flown in any government facility in the state by doing this. This one small act of adopting this flag as a Missoula official city flag doesn't cost us anything, but it has a ripple effect across the entire state as now that flag is available to be flown in any community, regardless of how supportive their LGBTQIA+ and S2 communities are. We have a very vocal and strong pride community in our community, but that is not true across the entire state of Montana. And the common sense conception is that when you don't have that strong community, those people don't exist, and that's not true. The people of the LGBTQIA+ and S2 community exist regardless of how much support they have in their community. And by our strong community adopting this flag, it shows other individuals across the state that they are seen and there is support, even if they don't see it in person in their hometown, and also allows them to fly their flag. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, come on up.
Hi, my name is Linus Peterson. I am a student at Hellgate High School as well. And when I learned about that bill, I was shocked, say the least. And I find it pretty... That flag isn't a symbol of hate. It's not a symbol of extremism. It's not a symbol of violence. It doesn't promote anything bad. It is a symbol of inclusivity and love. And I find it sickening that people want that to just... Want that to be erased and want to pretend that a group of people doesn't exist when that group of people isn't doing anything wrong. And I am in full favor of it... Of Missoula adopting the pride flag as its city flag.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Cora Barnes again. I just wanted to say that you might think it's just a welcoming message or a small rainbow flag, but it means so much more to students. And we notice it on the first day of school. We welcome to the classrooms. We notice which teachers have a welcoming message and a pride flag up. And it makes us feel comforted and safe and loved. And I was at lunch when me and my friends found out about the bill. And we talked about the teachers that were going to have to take them down. And then the next day, we noticed that they were gone. And that sense of love and comfort was gone. And I just think with where our country's at, we already all feel so discouraged. So I hope that you won't discourage us more, and you'll vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, come on up.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jenny Walsh. I'm also a trustee on the school board. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I didn't want to keep you up super late, but I'll try not to ramble. I have no preparation. My phone died. So we're just gonna go from the heart. I have been a lifelong educator. And one thing I've noticed... I've been in tons of classrooms and different official, you know, reasons to be there. But one thing I've noticed is that when you walk into a pride flag... When you walk into a classroom with a pride flag, it's not just the kids who are LGBTQIA+2S+ that benefit from it. It's the kid who's really into horses. It's the kid with autism. It's the kid who's wearing boots because they were working on their ranch all morning since 5:00 a.m. instead of wearing fancy Nikes. All of those kids walk in, kind of, you know, nervous. It's hard to be a kid any day, but, you know... And then they walk out of that classroom, shoulders back, chest proud. You get the best of them. And it's not just like that in schools. It's like that in cities. And when you walk around Missoula, you see all these people bringing their best selves to the table because they're not nervous. They're not nervous to share what's special about them. So I just think this is a great thing for all of us and not just in schools, but for our whole city. And what a way to set an example and be leaders in not only the state, but the country. So I'm just... I'm so proud of you. Last week, when this kind of started happening, and I didn't know what to do, but I knew who the helpers were in town. And I knew who I could reach out to and say, "Hey, what do we do, guys?" And how quickly we all work together. And isn't that what we want our kids to learn in school? Is how to, you know, when they approach barriers, how to work together and figure out how to build a bridge over it. And I just... I so appreciate each of you and each of what you bring to the table. And I'm just so proud to be part of the city. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Next public comment. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Samuel Haley. I actually... I wasn't planning on coming up here at all. I came here to see how this operates in the first place, just to experience it. But a long time... I want to share a story of a friend I had. I had a friend who used to be called Vincent. Her name is Veronale. She is a trans woman. But I don't know her anymore because she left my school. I don't see her anywhere along the halls. And I used to talk with her every day. And that's... I come from Big Sky. It is not the most liberal school in the county. So I can't help but think that she didn't feel accepted in my school. And I think that if we allow... If we force people to take down the only pride they have left in like what is an oppressive... An oppressive society for a lot of these people. It's so cruel. It's really unkind. I really appreciate that you're doing this for us. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down tonight.
Hi, my name is Ash Gregwire. I'm 15, and I attend Willard Alternative High School. Before that, I went to Sentinel. When I walk into a classroom and I see a pride flag, I instantly know that I am safe. I instantly know that this teacher is going to protect me, that they are going to make sure that I do not get bullied, that my peers do not get bullied. I know that they will give me a shoulder to cry. When the teachers were told to take down their pride flags, it was a punch in the gut. I asked that you please pass this so that they can put the pride flags back up so that we can all feel safe again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Betsy Krask. And I also was not planning on speaking today. I'm a former teacher. I'm a mom. I'm a community member. I taught Counselor Savage's child at school. And I was a teacher who had a pride flag in my classroom. And the meaning that it provides not only to students, but to teachers and colleagues and families and parents to feel welcome and to feel honored as an individual and to feel part of a community is one of the most important things that you can do as a community member, as a person on council, as a teacher. Everyone can feel represented with that symbol. And it's just an extension of our support of our community and those who live here. So I'm in support of the resolution that Counselor Savage has brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Krask. All right, come on up.
Hi, my name's Katie Thompson. I also did not expect to speak on this issue. I really appreciate that you guys are putting this forward. I'm a foster mom. I was a nurse. I just find it heartbreaking that anybody's under attack for just being who they are. And I know that when I walk into a classroom and see the flag, I feel like, great, they're accepting. And I think it does send a message. I think right now, it's pretty scary that words like diversity, inclusion, and equity are bad words right now, supposedly. I think we're living in an insane time. And I love that you guys, as a city, are putting it forward that that's not okay here. We're accepting. We want you. You bring variety to our community. We're not all alike. And I just think it's just so critical that we stand up for these people that are under attack. I think I find it terrifying. And I think we should support all citizens and especially those that are being targeted right now to send a message that you belong, that Missoula isn't a place that supports hate, and that hate doesn't occur. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Darcy Fairchild. And I am a mother and a mental health provider in this community. And I grew up in this community as a queer person who was not out until about three or four years ago as an adult. I know the importance of what it feels like to feel welcomed or not in your community. And I actually... I live outside of city limits in Potomac. And my family very much does not feel welcome in that community as a queer family. My child is also a queer human as well. And we have chosen to leave that community. And we will be returning back to Missoula where we will be residents in Ward 1. So representation absolutely matters. I sit in the office with individuals every single day who struggle because either their families don't accept them, their community doesn't accept them, or they are unable to accept themselves because of the messaging they get from their community members and their families. And we have a lot of power here as leaders in our community to set the tone of inclusion and community and love. And I'm really... I was so excited, Councilperson Savage, when you brought this forward. And I just want to thank you, no matter how it goes tonight, for bringing the conversation forward. It's a really important one. And I think we can save a lot of lives if we can get this symbol adopted as an official city flag. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down. Thanks for your comments.
Hi, my name is Robin Kendall. And I grew up in a part of the country that oppressed who I was. And I have always loved about Missoula that we are accepting and loving and kind and generous and have a sense of compassion and empathy about this community that I, you know, I could have used as a young child trying to come out to my family. And I had no one... There were no pride flags in classrooms. There were no pride flags in public spaces to know that I felt accepted or wanted or loved. It was the absolute opposite. And that's what we're creating here, is we're going so far backwards by forcing public spaces, schools to remove a symbol of inclusivity and community. And I love that someone said, "It's not just for the gays. It's not just for the queers. It's for everyone." Everyone that walks into a space where you see a pride flag feels welcome, regardless if you're straight, gay, bi, trans. And another little piece of it is I have a lot of trans adult friends here in Missoula that I have reached out to throughout this legislative session that are scared. They are scared to leave their homes. They're scared to go to work. And so for the city to put forward that we've got your back. We love you. And we see you would be huge. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Koali Uwali, good evening. My name's Dandelion Cloverdale, Ward 3. I am Public Education League for Trans visible Montana. And I am really thankful for the consideration of the city council and would love to just sort of like encourage your vote yes because if we're going to pass things like proclamations celebrating months of, you know, LGBT pride, and we're gonna have things like diversity days, it would be really great to be able to show a little piece of flair with like a colorful flag, just to like remind everybody that like, hey, we have those things here. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
I am Danette Fadness. She/her/hers. I am the proud mother... Okay, I'm the proud mother of a trans woman. As a teen, her father and I marched for the nondiscrimination ordinance that you all passed, so thank you. And we brought her along with us. She had not come out at that time. But when she did, she knew it was safe because her father and I had given her a safe place and Missoula has shown her it was safe to be here. As a gun violence prevention advocate and a suicide prevention educator, I know all too well the importance of ensuring inclusivity for all people to feel safe and to be who they are. And so I really want to thank you for considering this and keeping our community and our children safe.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Moore.
My name is Bob Moore. I am totally 1,000% opposed to this action of the city council. 1,000% opposed to this action of the city council. Monday, I was driving around the Veterans Cemetery. You know, I didn't see any flag except the United States flag. The United States flag was the only one that I saw. And I was looking for that purpose. I assume y'all are having to approve this flag. Have you approved the United States flag of the United States? You can answer. Any of you? Any of you ever seen the approval of the United States flag? You started off this entire thing as a charade. Some people have said this was... The bill was approving the flag of... The... Didn't even let it be just one of them. Absolutely disgrace what you're doing. And if you really want to know what the citizens are about, so don't think about it. Put it on the ballot next time and see how it comes out. Or take a survey. I remember some... I keep reminding the issue a while back. I remember some, I keep reminding the issue a while back, for a long time, had taken a survey. I'll pay for the survey of the citizens of the United, of the city to see whether the city of Missoula wants this flag as the, not just aim, but the flag of Missoula. Totally 100% opposed to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moore.
Hi, my name is Savannah Gary, G E A R Y. I'm just a queer Missoulian. In your Pride Month proclamation, you mentioned the increased targeting of LGBTQIA+ and 2S people nationwide. It is one thing to encourage community participation and celebration, it is another to take an actionable measure to carve out protections in response to clear overreach happening at the state and federal level. I am strongly in support of formally recognizing the pride flag as an official city flag. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other public comments this evening, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, members of the council. My name is Sonia Quackenbush, I reside in Ward 5. I just paid my taxes, so I am monetarily invested in our community. I am a little confused, well, I just want to say first of all to Representative Savage, I understand your heart of a mom. No one loves a child like a parent and there's just something, nothing is dear to our hearts. So I would like to just tell everyone in this room along that line that I am the mother of a US Army Black Hawk pilot. Believe me, I am on alert. I'm always interested in wars going on around the world, wondering if my son might be involved in one one day because he has signed his name on the dotted line to give his life for all of you in this room and your freedom. So I understand a mother's heart for her child. I have a question for the City Council. I think the population of our city is about 80,000, is that correct? Okay, so do you know what the population in Missoula of that 80,000 are LGBTQ plus people in that community? Do you have a number for that?
I'm sorry, Ms. Quackenbush, this is not a back and forth, so you can pose your question and that can be asked by City Council later during parliamentary debate. Thank you.
All right, well, I'm going to conjecture that it is probably not even half of our population. So we are a diverse community, we are comprised of people of many racial backgrounds and ethnicities, belief systems, and I am here to submit that that what you are proposing for the flag of our city is anything but inclusive and it is it is not inclusionary and it is not equitable. Because there are many facets of our population that are not represented under a pride flag. Right now, it's dangerous to be a Jew, even in America. Jews are being killed, Jews are being targeted in our country. So perhaps we should think of the Jewish members of our community, are they safe? Maybe we need to be flying the Israeli flag or maybe we need to incorporate something into the Missoula flag that would say Jewish people are safe here. What about Muslim people? Their religion does not allow homosexual practices. So do they feel safe when they see a pride flag? Does that maybe infringe on their beliefs? I think that we are being very narrow focused here and we are not thinking of everyone in the community. The role of government is to represent everyone in within that governmental structure and to provide the freedom or the protection for everyone. So I would just, is that the timer?
Yes.
Okay, I would just encourage us to think of that. And also, there seems to be some confusion, or at least for me, that we're talking about two flags tonight. We're talking about the pride flag being flown in the classrooms of our schools and we're talking about a city flag incorporating a pride motto. So I just think that that should be clarified, that this wasn't a school issue, I don't think, tonight. This is to talk about the flag that would be representing Missoula, our city. And so
Thank you, Ms. Quackenbush.
Okay, thank you. I would just urge a no vote on this. Thank you.
No, you may not, I'm sorry. Thank you. But thank you for asking. Other members of the public who haven't spoken tonight that wish to make public comment, please. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody in the audience. One more, come on up.
Years ago in my country, there was a trans woman named Jennifer Laude.
Do you speak closer to the microphone, please? And identify your name if you would, for the record.
Hi, I'm Jody. Years ago in my country, there was a trans woman who was killed by a Lance Corporal from the Marine US Navy because he met up with her and was ashamed that he slept with a trans woman and he murdered her. And the president, our own president, pardoned him for 10 years. And what's like the value of a brown trans woman to these people? Probably, it was nothing. And I have a lot of cousins, we are all LGBTQ plus. And that really scared everyone. And our country is not very tolerable to things like this yet, but America has been an influence to us and if you do this, it could probably set an example for us as well. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the audience tonight wishing to make public comment before we go to folks online?
Hi, my name is Kylie Barnes. I am an educator at MCPS. I work at an elementary school and have three children that are part of the Missoula County Public Schools as well. I think it is so important to be able to have representation across the board. Every morning in our elementary schools, we say the Pledge of Allegiance and also in many of our classrooms, we have pride flags up. I think that there is, it's not lost on me that there is, it's important to represent everybody and just looking at how many adults in the United States represent or identify as queer and it's 9.3% of the of of US adults, which is much, much, much more than are serving in the military. And so I think it's an important thing to think about when we're looking at at representation. And so it's a, it's a great thing for you guys to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Anybody else in the room?
Hello, my name is Adeline Monroe and I just wanted to say that I went to a Rebelling County School for most of my life and never once had I had a friend in the LGBTQ community or ever seen a pride flag in my school. I switched to Sentinel High School this year and I just wanted to say how much of a change has been in the acceptance in the community that I've found and that I have so many friends that are part of this community and I think it's a very amazing place that Missoula is very accepting of this. And I just wanted to say that keeping the pride flag in our schools would make a big difference in keeping our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna move to folks online. I do have a couple of hands raised online here. And so I'll go ahead and start at the top. So we have Clint Whittlefrazier, if you can unmute yourself. Get rid of him from you.
All right, can everyone hear me?
We sure can.
Awesome, it's working this time. Hi, everyone. My name is Clint Whittlefrazier, I live in Ward 6 in the Franklin to the Fort neighborhood. And I am expressing my strong support for the resolution recognizing the pride flag as an official flag of the city of Missoula. I was born in Billings and raised in Shepherd, Montana, places where during my elementary to high school years, anything queer related was completely taboo. I was bullied constantly, alienated by my peers, and left to navigate my identity in silence and fear. It took me years to understand who I was and even longer to accept it. That journey was painful and it's one that too many young people in our state still face today and is ongoing. Recognizing the pride flag as an official city emblem is not just symbolic, it's a statement of belonging. It tells young people growing up in places all over the state, including rural areas, that they are not alone. It tells residents who have faced discrimination that their city sees them and stands with them. I understand that some may have some concerns about this resolution and I'd like to respectfully address two of the most common. One, the city shouldn't endorse political or social movements. The pride flag is not a partisan symbol, is a symbol of human rights, of visibility, and belonging. Recognizing it is not about politics, it's about affirming that Missoula is a place where everyone deserves to feel safe and valued. Two is, this gives special treatment to one group. This resolution is not about special treatment, it's about acknowledging a community that has that has historically faced discrimination and exclusion. Just as we honor veterans and other groups of people through symbols and observances, recognizing the pride flag is a way to celebrate diversity and promote equity. Montana is currently experiencing what some are calling a queer drain as LGBTQ plus individuals leave the state in search of safer, more affirming communities. By adopting this resolution, Missoula can send a clear message that we are committed to being a place of hope, safety, and pride for all. Montana's recently passed law signed by Governor Gianforte bans the display of flags in public schools and certain government buildings that represent a political viewpoint, including those related to race, sexual orientation, or gender. This explicitly targets pride flags while explicitly protecting flags like the Gaston flag, the Thin Blue Line flag, and others that are often associated with conservative political identity. This contradiction is telling. The Gaston flag with its iconic "Don't Tread on Me" slogan is protected as a symbol of liberty and resistance to government overreach. And yet the pride flag, also a symbol of resistance, visibility, and the right to live freely, is banned under the same law. The message is clear, some identities are deemed worthy of public recognition while others are pushed back into silence. But the truth is, both flags represent deeply personal values. Just as the Gaston flag speaks to those who fear their freedoms are under threat, the pride flag speaks to those who have lived through marginalization, violence, and erasure. Both are about standing up for who we are and what we believe in. If we are to be consistent in our values as a state and as a city, we must recognize that the right to be ced and to belong is not partisan, it is human. So thank you for your time, thank you to the sponsor and your consideration of this important step forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. And next person online, Kajida Davis.
Sorry, I was having trouble finding the unmute button. My name is Kadisha Davis. I'm a resident in Ward 3 and a political strategist for the ACLU of Montana. The ACLU of Montana rises in opposition for this resolution. We saw lawmakers at the Montanas, at Montana 69th legislative session try to force queer symbols and people out of our communities, our schools, and our workplaces. They are targeting anyone and anything that does not follow their archaic rigid ideology of how men and women should live. There's nothing lewd, violent, or disruptive about any, anyone peacefully displaying their support of fairness and equality for the 2S LGBTQIA+ community. All people have the right to exist in an inclusive, an inclusive environment, free from partisan indiscriminer, discriminatory restrictions, pardon me. What these lawmakers claim are divisive concepts are actually opportunities to educate individuals on systemic barriers and discrimination queer folks and other marginalized groups still face in the country across its institutions. We must acknowledge and teach about the value, cultures, and histories of modern contributions for of all Americans, particularly of marginalized communities that are often the most invisible in many classrooms and workplaces. Our country and our local communities depend on the freedom for all people to be themselves without fear. A threat against any one group is a threat against all of us. We can fight for the future, we and our families all deserve by pushing back against these attacks in all efforts to push people into the shadows because of who they are, who they love, and where they're from. We just want to thank the sponsor for this resolution and we hope for a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. All right. Chester Sights, it is your turn for public comment.
I want to speak, just to say it's Ward 3 and I urge you to vote no on the resolution, but I also urge you to vote yes on making the 1978 LGBTQ rainbow pride flag as official city flag along with the United States flag, both of which have been featured in WhatsApp 2 for the museum and bye.
Thank you, Mr. Sights. Thanks for your comment. Anybody else online wishing to make public comment on this agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. I don't believe there's anybody else online. We have a full audience tonight. I'll give it another round here, see if there's anybody else in the audience before I, before I go ahead and wrap up our public comment and bring it back to City Council. Oh, come on up.
My name is Kristen Boomer and I moved here about 15 years ago. I am raising six kids in this community and I, every night, my trans daughter gets off work and calls me to make sure she's safe walking to our car. There's been numerous nights that she has not been safe. And she's about to graduate and go to University of Montana and I want her to stay here. I want her to stay where her family is, I want to say her to stay here and be able to play her clarinet with the professors that she's grown up idolizing. And I want my other children to know that they're safe at their school. Like so many people have said already tonight, this flag isn't just for one community, it shows an openness of a teacher willing to hear whatever situation they're in, whether it's that they don't have a home or that they're not safe at home or they're a part of a community that isn't always accepted. This flag shows that. And I just want to like echo, please support this, please help my children feel safe and please help me sleep better at night. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for your comments. All right, all right, come on up.
Hi, my name is Jesse Barnes and I hesitated speaking or coming up because I feel like my voice should not carry anything compared to the stories in this room. I have not been discriminated, I'm not personally affected by this, but I am in the Missoula Business Community as a member of the Chamber of Commerce, active member of Missoula Midtown Association and the Hellgate Venture Network and just want to say as a citizen of Missoula who's not personally affected by this, I support this very strongly that we should support the pride flag just as a Missoula businessman, as a Missoula CPA, that this should be part of the entire community supporting this, even if someone who's not personally affected by it.
Thank you for coming to share your comments.
My name is Chase Hakes. I live in Ward 2. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, I did not take a beta blocker, so I'm a little bit skittish. So I just want to clarify, I am also, I also work for the ACLU of Montana and I just want to clarify that the ACLU of Montana is in strong support of this resolution, not opposition. Our poor political strategist has been saying in opposition the entire legislative session, so she's a little bit exhausted of that. On a personal level, I moved away from Missoula for about a year and a half and I came back because the town that I moved to was really, really close to my hometown, but it was not supportive. It did not, yeah, they did, it was not very supportive of LGBTQIA+ two-spirit communities. So I came back as soon as I could because Missoula is my home because you guys have made it my home. Like the, the support for the queer community has just made a huge difference to me and in my own personal life and it's saved my life. And by, by doing something like this, it's just sending a message to, to all the other queer members of Missoula and, you know, all the allies and everyone that and, you know, all the allies and everyone that, Missoula is a place that you are free to be yourself and to be welcomed and loved for who you are and, and that Missoula is a place where you can make a home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. All right, folks, how are we doing on public comment? Ready to wrap it up? All right, great job. Well, we'll go ahead and wrap up our public comment, we'll bring it back to City Council for parliamentary debate. And I see that, Councilor Farmer, you have your hand up.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Jennifer for bringing this resolution forward and doing it so quickly. I really appreciate your leadership in this. This weekend, it was pretty telling reading the dozens of emails that we received that we were hearing pretty overwhelmingly from teachers and students. And I think if we're not pausing to listen to our teachers who often know our kids better than we do sometimes, that we would be doing something very wrong. So I appreciate all the comments tonight and over the weekend. I'll just share quickly, this weekend I asked my kids how they thought I should vote, they're 10 and 12. And they're often the best advisors when it comes to city council issues. And my 10-year-old asked me, well, Mom, why wouldn't you vote for it? And it wasn't challenging, it was just a genuine question. And I, I literally couldn't answer a reason why we wouldn't. Because to me and in my home, the pride flag doesn't mean that it's, that no one, that, you know, as a straight family that we're not welcoming to people. It means that everyone's welcome in my home, whether, no matter your race or religion or your sexual orientation. And so I am proud that my kids don't even see a reason why we wouldn't pass this. And I'm strongly in support of it.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Farmer. Councilor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I will be in total support of this resolution. But, you know, in the vein of inclusivity, I do wish that Ms. Savage had allowed other counselors to co-sponsor. I too am a parent of two gender queer spectrum kiddos and I adore them more than words can describe. I wish I'd been asked to read drafts and contribute to this extremely important resolution. I want to be able to tell my girls that I'm actively working on making the USA a safe home for them. But I do really appreciate this resolution for two reasons. And one, I touched on earlier, related to my kids, they're both on the gender queer spectrum, as I mentioned. And they both left the USA to move back to Australia for safety reasons regarding inclusivity. I miss my children and I wish the USA felt like another home for them. But because of gun violence and ongoing challenges to them for just being who they are, they've moved back to Australia. I also recognize that my kids are exceptionally lucky to have two citizenships so that they can pick a country that supports them for who they are and also has a government that provides a social safety net. Another reason why I think that this resolution is exceptionally important is because it supports local government control. In the wake of a legislative session that took away more rights from local government to rule in the manner that supports individual communities, this resolution shows the state, the Missoulians want to be able to have a community that represents them, not the state as a whole. We need a state that ensures communities can vote in legislation that reflects locals' local values as long as they are not harming or marginalizing others who may disagree. When the Black Lives Matter and Me Too movements garnered support and attention, it wasn't at the expense of those who are not black and who haven't been assaulted. It was because those two populations have been underprotected and even targeted. So we must focus our attention on protecting them. I'm proud to be in a town that shows support from our marginalized neighbors. It is without hesitation that I support this resolution. The ripple effects of Missoula taking a stand on this issue will provide support for our teachers and other professionals who help raise our children, our neighbors and most importantly, our children. I also want to thank all the public commenters, those for and against. It takes a lot of courage and vulnerability to share your opinion publicly on an issue like this, regardless of which side you stand on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jordan. And Councilor Cheryl.
Yeah, thanks. And I'm sorry that I'm unable to be there with you all tonight. I am on a very long day of driving getting my daughter home from college. But I want to, I want to thank everyone for coming out. I have been on the phone this whole time listening to all the public comment. And I want to thank Ms. Savage who had a swift, an immediate reaction to this bill. I didn't realize where it was and I just really appreciate that she got on it immediately and wrote it out and spent her time working on it and got a test tonight. So I think that is amazing and it shows what, it's a little example of a piece of passion for our community and for protecting our community. How motivating that can be for people. So, thank you, Jennifer. I, I can't say anything profound and that.
I mean, timing is everything. Councilor Cheryl, you froze right there.
And I really appreciate the teachers coming out. And again, I apologize if I'm not with you all tonight. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comments. Please drive safe. All right. Thank you. Councilor Melson.
Thanks, Mayor Davis. Thanks, Councilor Savage, for bringing this. And thanks to all of you for coming here and for speaking from the heart. I'm supportive of this resolution. And I just want to take a second to point out the hypocrisy, the continued hypocrisy here, that our legislature, which so often talks about local control, simultaneously is restricting the powers of us to meet the moment like this, to govern in ways that reflect the needs of the identity of our residents. You know, HB 819 is the most recent example of the state inserting itself in local governments, where we traditionally have had the freedom to act on behalf of our own community. This revolution defends our right to decide how our city shows up for you, our residents, and affirm our authority to shape what our public spaces and our schools reflect. Community, inclusion, self-worth, belonging, these are our values. By declaring this pride flag unofficial flag of the city, we're doing what we've always done. Recognize, support, nurture and stand up for everyone in our community and everyone who calls this our home. So I'll be very much in support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Councilor Becerra.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer, for putting so much heart into this issue. I have and will always support the LGBTQIA and two-spirit community. One common theme that came up with all the public comment and I completely agree with is creating a sense of belonging. And I think creating a sense of belonging is something that every community should always strive to create. Belonging is central to our existence and our experience as humans and it helps our communities be stronger. So I appreciate the work that went into this and all the public comment. And I too will be supporting this resolution.
Thank you for your comments. I keep going down the line if that's, but I'll come back to you for sure. Councilor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor. And I'm trying to put my thoughts together while this was unfolding, listening to public comment. So things might be a bit jumbled out of order. I just want to start with, I guess, the easy part, which is HB 819 was a very poorly crafted piece of legislation. It should have never have happened and, you know, I too take exception to the fact that they try to do one thing but want to make exceptions for other flags, other symbols, including this one right here. I don't believe there should be those exclusions. I think if they're going to say, you know, it needs to be just black and white, you know, these traditional governmental flags, it should be just that. And we shouldn't say, oh, but this is okay, or the Blue Line flag, the Gadsden flag is okay, or these other historic flags of, I think, flags of historical significance, I think is the way it's worded, which might include, you know, some genre Confederate flag and, you know, others. And, you know, I think it was improper to carve out those exceptions. And, you know, I think, you know, it's improper for, you know, this flag, you know, I have this flag because it's something that means something to me personally, it has value to me personally. It's reflected of, you know, a good chunk of my adulthood and, you know, the profession that I partook in law enforcement, so it's reflective of that. But that's a decision I made for me and me alone to display the Blue Line flag. And, you know, I think we as Americans should have a right to, you know, display, you know, and express ourselves the way we want to express ourselves in any way we see fit. That's part of being American. You know, I want to highlight the fact that the city of Missoula for some time now has, you know, pretty robust anti-discrimination ordinance in place, which includes protection for the LGBTQIA community in terms of business within the city of Missoula, in terms of housing within the city of Missoula. And, you know, I think if the city of Missoula had the pride flag flying at City Hall all along, I understand this flag was developed from the 1970s, somewhere in there, late 70s. If we had this flag all along, certainly somewhere along the line, someone will raise their hand saying, it's great you're flying this flag, but let's put more meat into this, you know, let's, you know, let's codify what it is to have, you know, these, these rights. And, you know, I've been supportive of anti-discrimination ordinance. I think that would have transpired now as a result of, you know, having those things in place to begin with. So, you know, I think the meat of it is the anti-discrimination ordinance and codifying, you know, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, you know, for, you know, discrimination and discrimination within housing. And, you know, I'm glad that we have that in Missoula because that's what most exemplifies, you know, the inclusivity of this community. But the next part, I didn't want to go down this road, but it was brought up there in public comment. Someone had mentioned a nexus between autism and the pride flag. And I feel compelled to speak on this because, you know, we put a lot of work as a family, my wife and I, for an autistic grandkid. I know I've mentioned this individual to my colleagues before. He goes to Missoula Public Schools, he's in middle school. And he struggles, he has autism, he's higher functioning autistic. He's socially delayed however, by clinically two to three years. So, you know, imagine being a middle schooler but having that social delay of, you know, that long and being that, and middle school is just the worst. I mean, it just, you know, thinking back to when I was in middle school. But, you know, he gets driven to school every day by his mom and he has a relationship with, she has a relationship with her employer to star shift later because he doesn't feel safe taking the bus. We pick him up from school every day because he doesn't feel safe taking the bus. There are reports, there are reports on file at the police department that he is bullied and on several occasions, this is the second year in middle school, that it's gotten to a physical point with bullying. My wife has worked really hard, you know, she's retired, I'm retired, she's retired, to get this kid through the school experience. And, you know, he does really well in school, actually, a very, very smart kid, very smart. But he has to be constantly directed and constantly put on task with what he's doing. My wife works really hard to keep him on task and part of it though is engagement with the school district, you know, to put a plan in place for him that could keep him on task, that everyone's coordinated from the principal to the school counselor to therapist, to his personal therapist, to the teachers. And it's a struggle for her every day because therapists can't be there every day if he's going through a crisis. She may be there, she may not be there, she does her best, you know, I give, I give credit where credit's due. But the teachers don't follow the plan. Just today, you know, she had to call the school because the teachers given assignments that aren't appropriate for them are not part of the plan and no one seems to be on the same page. And, you know, I guess what I'm driving at, you know, I could appreciate, you know, the good feelings that come and they're spoken at the podium here with inclusivity and, you know, feeling safe. And, you know, this nexus with other groups that may fall under the pride umbrella. But, you know, just speaking from my perspective for this one, I'm not speaking for all autistic children, certainly not. I'm just speaking for this particular kid, this particular situation that for him, and speaking in behalf of him, speaking in behalf certainly of his family and for us, what, what he needs is a school system to be there for him that's one to follow the plan that they put out for him, that's one to do the work they need to do to see him succeed, to see him feel safe. And quite frankly, and I'm just going to say it, the last thing he needs, the last thing he needs is to be handed a flag. I want to see a school do the hard work. We have an anti-discrimination ordinance for our entire city, that's where the need is. To meet the, where the wheels meet the pavement is what the school does, you know, beyond having the symbol, a piece of cloth in a classroom. And, you know, I just wish the school would do better to keep that in mind. I wish, you know, folks that have come here and spoken about, you know, the fact that this flag makes him feel safe to stop and think for a minute, you know, whether or not that's true for everyone in the committee, whether or not that the flag is the cure, the be-all, the end-all to feel safe. And I propose, that's not always the case. Finally, you know, I think at the end of the day, we go down this road of, you know, official flags, official government symbols. You know, I've heard comment about what's going on in Israel and, you know, that aside and, you know, other flags. Talk about Palestine or anything like that, but, you know, everyone has something that they hold value. But not everything we hold of value, you know, I think could automatically rise to the level of a governmental instituted declarative state or symbol or, you know, something codified into municipal code overarching with everything else we have. And for me, you know, we have a flag in the corner here that represents the United States of America. You know, the ideal is, you know, liberty and justice for all, for everybody. You know, it's a great experiment, that's the way it was described, the founding fathers when this country was, you know, developed and brought forth. And it's an experiment in democracy that continues to this day. And, you know, it's a, you know, the idea of a more perfect union, right? But I, I don't think that this is the proper path forward. I think, you know, for the here, for this particular purpose and for what a government symbol should be, you know, my view is pretty narrow. The United States flag, the state of Montana flag, and I don't think it should be anything beyond those two. I, any other symbols like this or Gadsden or anything else, you know, I'm not saying it shouldn't be reverency for it, but I don't think it should rise to the level of a government instituted symbol. So with all that said, I'll be voting no for this.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Campbell. Councilor Becerra.
Yeah, thank you. I first wanted to thank Jennifer for reaching out to me and mentioning her thoughts on this and for still valuing my opinion even though we disagree on a lot of things. So thank you, Jennifer, for that. With that being said, that there are very, there are a lot of ways as an individual to represent what matters to you without it being an official government stance. And I do encourage everyone to proudly display who they are and what they believe in if that's what you want to do. It was mentioned a lot this evening that Missoula does accept everyone and I absolutely agree with that. But to do that, to remain neutral and supportive for all of our citizens, we need to do just that. Remain neutral and uphold public trust by not taking either side either way. I wanted to thank everyone who spoke tonight because it is very difficult to show vulnerability and I really do appreciate everyone. But unfortunately, adopting the pride flag or any other flag, whether it be the Thin Blue Line flag, the BLM flag, the Gadsden flag, et cetera, any of those accepting as an official flag, it does choose sides. And we do need to remain neutral as a local governing body. So, So, um, I, I will not be in support of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Vasika. Counselor Carlin, do you have a comment?
Okay, you're, uh, Counselor Nugent, I'll come back to you. I know that Counselor Carlin was winning. You bet, absolutely. I just didn't see your hand raised.
Um, yeah, not online, sorry.
Oh, no worries, no worries. All right, thank you.
Yeah, watching the federal and state government this year just has had us all on the edge of our seat, just wondering what terrible thing's going to come up next. And every time that's happened, I, you know, can look, look and see what's going on in Missoula and I can count on our community to show up and, and protest or call their government officials and speak out and do everything that we can to show solidarity for any time that the government's attacking human rights. And I, you know, it was great to be able to show up to different protests in Missoula or Helena and to be a part of this community where people are protecting our queer community here in Missoula. And I think, you know, it's important that we, that we pass this today. And thank you to the, everybody in the community who reached out and made this grassroots effort happen. And thank you to the council members who worked on this. I, I really appreciate you all. And I think it's important, um, you know, to be able to fly these flags in, in the schools and in our government. You know, I think the kids are, are watching what's going on in the world and they need to know that they're supported by, by their governments and by their communities. So I think it's, this is a great idea to, to pass this and make this the, the pride flag, the official flag for Missoula.
Thank you, Counselor Carlin. Counselor Nugent.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Davis. You know, I appreciate everyone's comments and, and even the, the couple in the last few that talked about why they're opposing it, I, I recognize some of what you were saying. The issue with, um, everything going on is we're here because the state legislature passed HB 819 and HB 819 picks sides. So we can't just sit here and act like, oh, now let's stay neutral. Because HB 819 targets specific people while making other people winners. I mean, all you have to do is read the text. It, it allows for historical American flag, it ha, it allows for, um, the official flag of, uh, any federally recognized foreign nation. So some of the public comments talking about that, that the flag of Israel could fly in any classroom tomorrow, perfectly legal in the state of Montana. The, uh, don't tread on me flag, perfectly legal in the state of Montana right now. The Confederate flag, perfectly legal in the state of Montana right now. For us to sit here and act like the state legislature and legislator who introduced this wasn't targeting a specific group is nonsense. And so I agree, it's ridiculous that the city even has to be in a position where we are going to recognize and adopt this as an official flag of the city of Missoula. It's not the, because, um, to look back at my notes here, I, the dangerous thing is a city council member spending two hours reading state statutes. The Montana Law 1-2-1, 1053 of the Montana Code annotated states the singular include, includes the plural and the plural includes the singular, which I believe means that when a statute refers to the, a flag, it can be interpreted to mean one or more flags unless context clearly indicates otherwise. And this does not. I think that, um, granted, I recognize that in two years, we're probably going to be in here because they're probably going to come and take it out, take it away. And I hope everybody who's here is ready to go to Helena and fight. Because I think that, because there was so much crap going on in Helena, some of this stuff got missed. But for the time being, I think we are well within our rights, uh, as the city of Missoula to recognize this as, uh, as, as an official flag recognized by the city of Missoula. And, um, you know, we talk about neutrality, we talk about, you know, the, the way they kind of went after this, but, um, this bill expressly prescribes what speech is allowed. And they're, by then saying exactly what speech is not allowed. And by, by Missoula recognizing this as an official flag, we are bringing that, some of that speech back. And this selective approach, it privileges some beliefs and forms of recognition over others in government spaces. And I just think that that's absolutely wrong. This helps us create space for kids who shouldn't be the subject to so much political posturing over things they have no control over. Creating safe spaces saves lives, it does not force anyone to believe anything they don't want to. It does not force everyone to fly this or any flag. It absolutely does not mean that every classroom must fly the flag or every teacher must create this space, but it does allow leaders to create space for people, for kids who might feel like they don't fit in, like their reality is somehow less acceptable, that if their family doesn't fit a singular design, they don't belong. This is not an us or them, as somebody mentioned, this is creating an everybody where we are stronger, where everyone is included and feels like they belong. Missoula adopting this as an official flag allows it to be flown in public buildings around the state. So again, Missoula, as is our history, is a leader on this issue instead of waiting for other people to react. I could go on and on, but I, you know, I've said it a couple of times over the years on council, uh, but I, I just want to use this space to, to acknowledge that, you know, if you are someone who feels like the life you're, you're living doesn't fit the normal, you've got a safe space here. If you're somebody who feels like your, um, family doesn't fit in, you might have two dads and you go to school every day and this, uh, you know, we, we have members of our delegation in DC saying that that's not normal, that this is separate. Missoula is a safe space for you. We recognize people, we want people to be able to live their life here in Missoula and this is absolutely the right thing to do. And I don't care if tomorrow it got thrown out in court, it would remain the right thing to do and we should all be proud to vote for it. So, thank you Jennifer for bringing this forward and I'm, I'm happy to be part of it tonight.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Nugent. And Counselor Jones.
Thanks. You guys have been sitting here a long time and just want to say thanks first of all. And to the teachers and educators, thank you for your service. I had kids at MCPS for 18 years. You guys work really hard and I want to say that first of all. Jennifer, you worked really hard for the last three days when I know you have a ton of other things on your plate. And thank you for seizing the moment in a really important time when we needed to have this conversation in Missoula. And, um, so you spearheaded that and thank you for that. I will just say that I, this is my 10th year on council, I never once had an email about pride, pride flags in classrooms until this week after HB 819 went into effect. So they say in the language of HB 819 that the intent is to create a more inclusive environment in government spaces, but it had exactly the opposite effect. And that's why it's important to have this conversation on the floor. This is something that maybe the school district could have picked up, but I think it, just as was made in comment, this is a community-wide issue and it is important to message this on a community basis. So I'm glad we're having this discussion and I'm glad we're having it before school gets out in the next few weeks. Needs to happen now as a very strong message, not during the quiet months of summer when nobody's paying attention. To me, this is a complete legislative overreach when people should be honoring local control. And yes, it is a very targeted bill. It's also frankly, a hot mess of a bill is what I would call it. It is contradictory and a lot of this has been touched on already, but it talks about, it's okay to fly flags with historical significance. Well, the pride flag has huge historical significance if you bother to look it up and read it all about it, which I read a lot more this weekend than I ever had before. You know, it goes back to the 1970s with Harvey Milk in San Francisco. It has a ton of historical significance. So that's a contradiction. And then they say that you should not fly anything that has a political ideology. Well, the Gadsden flag is very much political ideology. And people should go look this up online maybe before they write stuff like this because they need to get up to date on current culture. So tons of contradictions and then, oh, I like this at the end. Nothing in sections one through three may be construed to limit the private speech of individuals. So I, I don't know what happens with HB 819. I don't know if it winds up in the courts or not, but there's a ton of contradictions. When I look at our Montana State Constitution, Article 2, Declaration of Rights, Section 4, Individual Dignity, "The dignity of the human being is inviolable. Either the state, nor any person, firm, corporation, or institution shall discriminate against any person in the exercise of his civil or political rights on account of race, color, sex, culture, social origin, or condition, or political or religious ideas." So should teachers be able to put flags up in their classrooms to make it an inclusive place for their students? Begs the question, doesn't it? And then of course, freedom of speech, expression, and press, Section 7. No law shall be passed impairing the freedom of speech or expression. This is just such a clear, when I call it overreach, to me, it's really, um, this bill is a bully. And I think sometimes you got to take a stand and push that bully back. So I'm glad that we are having this conversation. Do we win in court? That's beyond us, we'll have to figure that out. Can we have more than one flag? That's not really the issue tonight. I think we'll figure that one out too. The issue is that this is a community issue. This is important to all the folks in our community, I think. And if you want to look at the pride flags, so the way, and Jennifer, maybe you can speak to this in your comments, the way you wrote this, it is inclusive of pride flags. Love word, using that word in that sentence there. The very first pride flag, and I didn't know this until this weekend when I looked it all up, the different colors in the very first pride flag created in the 1970s, the colors stand for all sorts of different things. This is not just gay rights, this is far larger. Hot pink for sex, red for life, orange for healing, yellow for sunlight, green for nature, turquoise for art, indigo for harmony, violet for spirit. And when you read through all of the other iterations of the pride flags, there's so much in there. It is so rich, so many different layers of inclusivity. So I think anyone in our city can find themselves in those pride flags if they want to take the time and look there and talk about inclusive, that's very inclusive. So, you know, we have a rainbow, um, crosswalk and I'm really happy to vote for a official pride flag for the state, for the city of Missoula.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. And Counselor Savage, bring it home.
Thank you. I just wanted to say briefly that, um, I really appreciated Ms. Vasika's comment. I think most people around this dais would say that I am willing to talk to or work through issues with anyone on this dais, no matter if we agree or not. Ms. Jordan reached out to me Friday afternoon after this resolution was fully baked and submitted so that I could hit our submittal deadline and we could hear it tonight. Hopefully there will be other opportunities for Ms. Jordan and I to collaborate on legislation, but that's why, um, I didn't reach out to Ms. Jordan because I was working fast and furious so that we could get it, so we could hear it tonight. I wanted to say that I, I so appreciate everyone who came out and came to, uh, comment. And also, um, I drove across the Higgins Bridge on the way here and it was a beautiful sight, it was very moving. And I'm really, really glad to see it. I also wanted to say that, um, uh, my daughter's been texting me throughout this meeting and, uh, not because she is acutely aware of what is going on in the outside world sometimes, but mostly because she absconded with my car and, um, has been worried about our Snapchat streak. And when I told her I couldn't deal with Snapchat right now, um, that I was in the middle of talking about her, um, she said, uh, she wanted to make sure that I, that I mentioned her camo cargo pants, which I did. And, um, and I think that Betsy and Darcy probably remember those camo cargo pants because they were both in her life when she was very young. So, um, uh, thank you all again for being here. And as Ms. Jones said, there are many, many pride flags, um, lots of iterations. And if we pass this tonight, hopefully you can fly them all. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for all of your comments. And with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
All right, voting on a resolution of the city council recognizing the pride flag as an official flag of the city of Missoula, beginning with Carlin.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl, Cheryl.
Yes.
Sika.
No.
Becerra.
Yes.
And Campbell.
No.
That's nine in favor, two opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much, the motion passes. Thank you, everybody. All right, I also want to thank everybody for a very respectful dialogue or at least commentary, there's not much of a dialogue obviously back and forth on the podium, but thank you very much for, uh, the opportunity to express, um, views and opinions here in support of your fellow Missoulians. I want to say that I am very proud, proud to be a Missoulian this evening. We have some more business to take care of, but in the meantime, we're going to do a 10-minute break, so I'm going to recess us for 10 minutes. Thank you. I couldn't tell at all, I'm shaking too. Everybody shake. It's all good. Thanks, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. I appreciate you following up with me. That's nice. Thank you. All right, folks, let's get started. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order at 9:01 PM. Looking around the room, we, yeah, yeah, we've got enough, enough folks to have this meeting. Thanks for those online. Counselor Jordan, I know you're online. And I do believe that Counselor Cheryl is driving and we don't see her anymore. So thank you for the little break there. Appreciate that. So folks, that brings us to our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. And we have not a, not a huge consent agenda this evening. And so Ms. Trimble, if you'll go ahead and share that on the screen and read that aloud for folks, that'd be great.
All right, on this evening's consent agenda, we have a motion to ratify accounts payable or checks or claims dated May 27, 2025 in the amount of $9,667,568.48. We also have a motion to approve accounts payable or claims for checks dated June 3, 2025 in the amount of $2,583,106.11. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services amendment one, when Morrison merely for the North First Street Water Main Replacement Project at a cost not to exceed $95,369. We have a motion to approve the trail easement agreement with changes as presented with Stone Mountain Homeowners Association and authorize the mayor to sign. We have a motion to adopt a temporary council rule requiring the budget, that budget amendments be submitted in writing to the clerk and finance director no later than 5:00 PM on Monday, August 4, 2025. And a vote on the floor, a vote to open the floor after will require a simple majority. And finally, we have a motion to adopt a resolution relating to $1,182,000 in sewer system revenue bonds or DNRC Water Pollution Control State Revolving Loan Program, Series 2025A.
Great. Thank you very much for reading those aloud, Ms. Trimble. And do we have any public comment tonight on the consent agenda? Not seeing any in the room. How about online? Do we have any online? Any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing any. Do any council members wish to separate any items from the consent agenda? Nope. Okay, then we'll go ahead and do a voice vote for this item, please.
All right, on this evening's consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. Our next agenda item is regular business, of which we have none. So nothing under agenda item number nine. And that then brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. So if there are members of the public that wish to provide public comment on non-agenda items, please come on up to the microphone. All right, not seeing any in the room here. How about online? Any members of the public wishing to make public comment? Items not on the agenda. All right, I'm not seeing any. So that wraps that up. Next item up is communications from the mayor. Boy, I just, I want to again thank, thank Counselor Savage and for bringing forward this item in a way that allowed us to have a moment to meet the moment when we are seeing some things take hold in our state, in our community that does threaten the safety and wherewithal with, for many of our, our residents. I just wanted to speak to a couple of cool things that I did over the weekend I thought was really fun. On Saturday, I had the chance to go to the, the grand opening of the Alien Detention Center barracks at the historic Fort Missoula. It's a project that has been underway for a decade or more. And Fort Missoula is, of course, part of, the historic fort is part of the Missoula County. The historical research associates and others, the, the group of folks put together this really interesting, interactive exhibit that follows the lives of five Italian men and five Japanese men. And, and of course, this was in response after, in World War II, after the attack on Pearl Harbor. And these folks were, in language of the day, resident aliens and nationals that were wrongly detained and brought to Fort Missoula. And of course, this is one area of the country, but there were many places in which people were detained against their will in response to, to the, to those circumstances. It was really interesting. They did a great job. And I'm constantly reminded just how much of a value the fort has for not only our community, but for the country in terms of just our wide and varied history. Commissioner Slotnick spoke at that event and couldn't have said it better just in terms of really understanding that history in our country and recognizing, you know, this is a, this is a very delicate, as was said tonight, democracy is a delicate project. And it is a relatively short time period that we as a society and a, and a country and other countries have undertaken this. And it's important that we learn from the past as we're taking a look at our actions of, of currently and in the future. So it was, it was something that was really eye-opening. I hope folks would take a look at it. It was very cool. The other thing that, just one of the other things that I happened to participate in was Marshall Madness yesterday. It was a group of user groups, as we call that. So it was Five Alley's Land Trust and the Mountain Bike Coalition and Run Wild Missoula. And they hosted a series of activities for folks up at Marshall Mountain. And a lot of it was about getting folks up there that have never been up there. You know, there's several community members that might believe that it is only for like, you know, expert or advanced mountain bikers, and that is not the case. They've actually been working on a trail up there that is for an all-abilities trail. And you've heard me talk about the Mars Organization, which is the Missoula Accessible Recreational Organization. And, and a friend of mine is on their board and has helped set that up. And he's now a paraplegic after a Sawyer accident, after he was cutting trees. And he, he unfortunately had a, an accident, but he survived, thank God. And he's a paraplegic, but he gets out there on his trike. And he can now bike up at Marshall Mountain. Because we own that property, we have the ability to make those improvements that we wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity to do when it is for a service land. And so it's really remarkable to see the wide breadth of community members that were taking part in. It was just, it was really exceptional. So I encourage folks to get out there, whether you're a mountain biker or a hiker. Plenty of people hiking and walking up there as well. And I had my first dunk, dunk tank. So folks asked if they could dunk the air and I had lots of people, especially kids, showing up to dunk me. So fortunately, there was a wet suit because they pulled the water straight out of the creek. So it was about 47 degrees. So it was, it was chilly, but it was very cool. And it's something that we really should be proud of amongst many other things here in our community. So just something fun to share. Thank you. So I'm going to pass it on to Counselor Nelson. Okay, you bet. And Counselor Farmer.
I'll also pass.
And Counselor Nugent.
I'll pass, thanks.
Counselor Savage?
I'll also pass. I think you've all heard plenty from me tonight.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to go around the horseshoe here. Counselor Basara?
I'll pass, thank you.
And Counselor Campbell?
Oh, pass may as well, thank you.
You bet. Counselor Jones? Counselor Carlino? Okay, boy, all right. And how about online? Counselor Jordan?
I'll pass too. Thank you.
You bet. And how about you, Counselor Vasika?
I'm sorry, I can't pass because there is a survey going on for the Missoula County Public Schools. Apparently, they're teaming up with WGM Group to, I'm just going to read it straight off the website. So Missoula County Public Schools owns 14 properties that include several parcels of vacant or underused land and buildings that are currently rented to other organizations. And to determine how these 14 buildings and properties can best serve the district's core purpose and meet its growing needs for the future, the MCPS Board of Trustees has voted to move forward on a plan to better understand those properties. And so WGM Group is asking the public to comment on some of these buildings. I believe the survey closes on the 4th, so that's in two days. Just Google or whatever your favorite search engine is, Engage WGM Group, not Engage Missoula. It's Engage WGM Group. And some of the properties that they're looking at is the Lifelong Learning Center, the Cold Springs Bill, Cold Springs Building, Jefferson Building, and about 10 other ones. So highly recommended to go to that survey to get your, your input heard. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for making sure folks are aware of that. That's great. All right, that wraps up our council comments then, and that means that we are adjourned at 9:12 PM. Thank you very much, folks.